Welcome everyone. Welcome to the Special Committee of the Hall Meeting. This is a joint meeting with the Fire Hall Steering Committee. This is Thursday, June 5th, 2025. I'm so pleased to see you here. First of all, we would like to acknowledge that the District of Metropoese conducts its business on the Coast Sailors Territory and the territory of the Shiano First Nations people. The District of Metropoese works to increasingly be mindful of our commitment to be more inclusive in our governance with our neighbors. I would like to acknowledge our neighboring First Nations governments with whom are committed to building stronger relationships. We understand that they're also making important decisions for their nation and for our community. We want to acknowledge the Shiano First Nation and the SoCal First Nation and also want to welcome Chief Chip and Councillor Peytonman to our meeting. Council, before you, you have an agenda. If I could take a motion to approve the agenda, please. Moved by Councillor Shukin, seconded by Councillor Donaldson. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Introductions. So, as I said, welcome to the Joint Council Fire Hall Steering Committee meeting. I want to welcome members of the Fire Hall Steering Committee to this table, namely Mike Cornick, the Chair of the Fire Hall Steering Committee, Brent Donaldson, Scott Henning, DC Henning, Bruce McCall, Jody Carlines, sitting at the back, Steve Malko, and Shane Stewart. Welcome. And also at the table, we have Councillor Sherry Epp, Councillor Jay Shukin, Councillor Steve Gray, and Councillor Shelley Donaldson. I also want to welcome our consultants Edward Craig and Kimberly Johnson, who are architects and consultants from Johnson Davidson Architecture and Planning, Inc. to this meeting. They're live streamed here. Welcome, Ed. Nice to see you. So, in the spring-
Hello. It's just Ed. No Kim, Nate.
In the spring of 2022, Skyline Engineering was asked by the- Sorry, in the spring of 2023, 2022, Skyline Engineering was asked to review the fire hall structure and the historical documents to provide a structural review and comment on the existing seismic capacity. The Fire Hall Steering Committee was set up earlier that year. The current council approved the spending of funds for the fire hall feasibility study in March of 2023. An RFP for the contract was issued later that year. The Fire Hall Steering Committee has been tasked with working through the information from the consultants. All Fire Hall Steering Committee meetings have been held in open meetings in the public with agendas and minutes. Council has only discussed the fire hall feasibility study at open meetings. As promised, we will continue to be open and transparent as we work our way through this assessment and this process. The objective of this meeting is to have an exchange of information between these two groups. Much of this information is technical in nature and complex. We have experts in the field, both at this table and online, within the steering committee as well, who will help clarify this information for us. This is a fact-finding meeting. I'm hoping that there will be a healthy exchange of information between all parties at this table. No decisions or resolutions will be had at this meeting. All the information from this evening will be forwarded to our following meeting, starting next Monday. We have plenty of time for this meeting, for this discussion, and I want everybody at this table to feel welcome. Your opinion is valued. As far as the meeting guidelines are concerned, we will continue to adhere to normal council procedures, so please direct all your comments and questions through the chair. The District of Metropoese is considering several options for modernizing the existing aging fire hall to meet the new standards. Let's begin with public participation, and then we will move into the first report. So, should the public wish to speak, you have four minutes if you could state your name and your street. Thank you.
It's in need of replacement and has been for many years. The meaningful study and discussion of its future is long overdue, but we are very grateful that these conversations are now happening. Selvi and I believe that a new fire hall, possibly constructed on the adjacent municipal property, would be the most expedient and cost-effective solution for a couple of reasons. First, the renovation and reconstruction of the old fire hall, while housing the fire department in some sort of temporary structure, is fraught with unknowns, costly in terms of budget and time delays. Repurposing the old structure to accommodate the future needs and demands of a busy rural emergency unit seems to us to be unuseful, wishful thinking. Second, if the level-clear land next to the present facility can be made available through the ALC, then planning, fundraising, tendering, and construction can begin without interruption to the existing community fire service. To our minds, this is a very big positive. And thirdly, the transition from the old hall to a new one would pose the least disruption to all of the other functions that operate out of the fire hall. In addition to emergency fire and medical response, Metropoese's community safety and emergency preparedness agencies are vital for any unexpected events. Our beloved firefighters and dedicated volunteers give their all to protect and keep us safe. The least we can do in return is provide them with a safe and healthy work environment. And just so you know, I went to buy a lottery ticket the other day, and the woman at Till said to me, "What are you gonna do if you win?" I said, "Build Metropoese a new fire hall."
Thank you for that.
Karen Hoffman. This is the first time I've used this mic, obviously. Karen Hoffman, Neil Road. I would like to thank council for getting going on this project, and I would like to thank the steering committee for all the work that you've put in. Volunteer time is greatly appreciated in Metropoese. I am definitely in favor of building a new fire hall. I would think the most logical solution would be to build it on ALR land. And having said ALR land, I think that all of this property should be withdrawn from the ALR land, particularly as 70% of it already has exemptions from ALR use, and it doesn't seem logically feasible for it ever to become agriculturally significant in Metropoese. It's a community asset as it is. I would like to, it doesn't make sense to refurbish the fire hall that exists now, given that the earthquake capacity and the building code, a lack thereof, is of concern. I think that's about, yeah, all. We need to provide our volunteers with the best possible equipment and support our fire chief in recruiting volunteers so that we don't become one of the communities in DC that has no volunteer fire department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gavin Aubrey, Metropoese Road. I've had the pleasure of being a volunteer firefighter in Metropoese for seven-ish years now, since 2018. I've had the utmost privilege of working alongside the most dedicated and caring individuals I've ever met. The members of Metropoese Fire are willing to drop their lives, miss holidays, anniversaries, birthdays, and family time at moments' notice to respond to any requests for help. We're willing to put our lives on the line for the opportunity to save another. We acknowledge that every time we get on the truck, it might be the last ride. We know that the scenes that we see will be burned into our memories, and that every time we close our eyes, they'll live in our nightmares. We accept these risks because to save life, to make a difference, in someone's worst days, the highest calling. However, it has become apparent that one of the biggest risks to our health and safety is the fire hall. Councillor Shukin asked, what do you call a apparatus being stationed together? Well, in the fire service, we call it a firehouse, because that's what it is. It's a place where we come together, where we train, where we sleep, where we wait for the call to action, where we set up events, where we teach the community and maybe host birthdays. Right now, the firehouse that we have is not a beacon of safety, but a place that will make us sick. We have inadequate decontamination areas, which will increase our cancer risk. We're constantly exposed to diesel fumes. We have a rat infestation that leaves us shaking feces out of our gear. We have unacceptable mold levels. We have a roof that leaks so bad that we run out of buckets. The deluge of water has continued. Where members that have recently started sleeping at the hall to provide a better service, a 24/7 service, they will be crushed by the rubble that Councillor Shukin pointed out will happen if that building collapses. We'll be delayed in emergency response to any mass disaster by not being able to get our trucks out or by having them crushed. What we want is to serve this community. We want to serve this community to the best of our capacity. We are there to serve with any call, from setting up events to catching bullfrogs, my favorite memory of the fire service. We want the ability to respond without delay to disasters, to not needlessly increase our cancer risk. We want the center of emergency response to not be the biggest danger to the emergency response. While a massive earthquake could happen 350 years from now, if a mass disaster happens today, we would not be able to adequately respond. The current firehouse is not a theoretical danger, but a current danger to those inside of it and those who respond from it. I know a financial responsibility is important, and due process must be followed. However, I hope the urgency of the situation is understood, and the preciousness of life is at the forefront of everyone's mind. The final cost of this firehouse will not be measured in dollars per square foot, but in preventable loss of life for indecision and delay. So, I leave one question for Mayor and Council. What is the worth of a life to you?
We don't claps at council meeting. Thank you for not clapping. Chief Chip.
I didn't clap, but I will commend that young man. What is a life worth? I mean, what a statement to make. I'm here to support the firefighting, the hall being moved, whether it be in ALR lines or anywhere. I believe that when the firemen come up to look after us, we don't grab the hose from them and start hosing off the house. You know, they know their job. They know what their needs are, and they should participate in where their new facility should go and how it should work and what should be in it. I think it's the most important people that should have the word or the say is the fireman. Like, I stand behind it fully because I know that when they get on the truck, it might be the last ride. I know it might be my- Oh, God. They might be the last person I see. Like, they're there for us. They're always gonna be for us. And when you're running a municipality, the things that you need most for safety is sewer, water, emergency services. You can't not put those aside. Your town won't work without those. And we have to make sure that our emergency services are correct. Healthy rats, feces in your ear. I don't even know why we're having a meeting about this. Like, it- That's odd to hear and odd to find out that we're- Oh, I don't know, debating or not debating. I don't even know what this is yet. Like, I'm just here to support, but I wouldn't think there would be a debate on that at all. They need a safe environment because they keep us safe, and they're always gonna keep us safe. They said themselves. The last thing they might do is get on that fire truck. And that's, I don't know how to repay those people. This is not my story, but one of our members seemed like she was holding on. She was her last. She was leaving the world. And we were debating on what's making her hold on, what's making her hold on, like, what's, we didn't wish anything bad on her, but I was talking to my friend, and she goes, "Fireman." I'm like, "What do you mean?" Like, she goes, "The firemen." She wants to see the firemen. We looked over in the bed, and she just smiled. One call. And they were there. And I don't know. She left shortly after. Like, I don't know if it was a coincidence or not, but she smiled when they got there, and I don't know how you can replace that or put a value to that or why you would even debate on stuff like that, like, the fire hall needs to be fixed. Let's do what it takes to get it fixed. If we need to partner somewhere, tell us where we need to partner, and we'll show up. We're ready to stand by these firemen, these people, these young men, young women, and do what it takes. They need lifting up right now, and we should be doing that. So, thank you and nice to have you here.
Glad you spoke first. I couldn't beat my grandson. He was the guy. Ron Aubrey, 3745 Metropoese Road. I have every community covered. My grandson's here in Metropoese. My son's the fire chief in Langford, and I'm a past volunteer with COVID for 20 years and now a life member. I care. I can't believe I'm here talking to save and get a new fire hall. These people are our first line of defense. It doesn't really matter which way we go, whether it's a fire, it's an accident, a bee sting, where I had somebody die on my property. Fire Department was there. So, there's been hearing, council, that you've been hearing negativity from people, so you're concerned about, "What the hell am I gonna do?" Well, you're hearing the positive tonight, and by God, we need a new fire hall. I am concerned, council, that you are allowing these firefighters to be in this building now. When there is mold, there's feces and whatever, and these people are sleeping every night to be there to protect us. That's bullshit. As far as I'm concerned, chief, call work safe, because if you don't, guess what? They might get a call. Council, you are their employer. It's your responsibility. So, if you can't give them a clean building, then bring in a portable. But these firefighters need to know that they come to be defended in a safe environment. Public support, where I'm a little concerned about here is that the, you have an opportunity for $7 million, a grant, possibility, but you've got to get it done by September. That's a lot of money for us taxpayers. So, let's move forward to get the grant put in, to see if we can get that $7 million. Every year, we've been delaying this build. We hired people within our community to be, give us their recommendations for a hall. Don't delay anymore. You know what every year brings. It's more dollars, and it gets costly, and we can't afford it. Because sooner or later, that's exactly what's gonna happen. We can't afford it because there's only a small number of people in our community of just over 5,000. So, we got the police to have our, take a big chunk of our money. But, but please, council, you were elected by us, the residents, to work on the best interest of us, the residents. And I'm saying to you, the best interest for us residents is a new fire hall. And quit dilly-dallying. Get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sasha Kubicek, 565 Wooden Road. I'm a 13-year farmer in the community. A huge advocate for ALR land and farm protection. And I just want to applaud the steering committee and contractors for being so conscientious and forward-thinking on the location of this fire hall. This is one of the most cut-and-dry exclusions out of the ALR that I've ever seen in my career. This is keeping key infrastructure and assets within the village core. That land there has no agriculture value. I'm a mentor with young agrarians for over a decade. We help new farmers start farms. We help existing farmers expand their productions. I would tell a new farmer or any farmer not to touch that with a 10-foot pole. The feral rabbit situation in that field alone- I want to add, extreme flooding in the winter. That has no drainage. There's no irrigation. There's no infrastructure for storing tools, for any kind of assets for a farm. On top of that, it's a weekly parking lot for decades of spill compaction. This is a no-brainer. I applaud the location and really encourage this council to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Pantin, Sandgate Road, which is down at Weir's Beach. I just wanted to thank Mayor and Council and the committee for giving us the chance to speak. My husband and I feel really strongly, have consulted with the fire crew for years. We are stewards down at Weir's Beach, and the increase in traffic and people down there, we've called for rescues, we've called for accidents, we've called for fires. And if we had to wait for another department to come, I don't want to think what would happen. There's four things that I want you to consider, and what has been said by Chief Chip and this very eloquent- I can't, I won't repeat, but obviously, our current firehouse is unsafe. The emergency response is being compromised, and I didn't realize until I read the report. And also, in the Goldstream Gazette today, they outlined some more issues around the 70-year-old firehouse, which I thought it wasn't that old, but apparently, is it 50 years? It said 70. But our Metropoese firefighters deal with fires, medical calls, and wildfires, and our crews are already facing increasing demands. From personal experience, we've been able to count on the chief and her crew, and we've all noticed an increase in traffic on our roads, beaches, and trails. It's only going to increase with the growth of beachlands and Royal Bay. You know, it's a long-term, it's a long-term and smart investment. This isn't just about fixing today's problem. This is about preparing for the next 25 to 50 years. A new hall will be energy-efficient, climate-resilient, and ready for future growth. Insurance companies assess risk when setting premiums. If a community lacks a modern functional fire hall, it may be rated as higher due to slower emergency response times or poor fire suppression infrastructure. Insurers may charge higher premiums, which will affect all of us as taxpayers. Addressing the concern, but what about taxes? Listen, it's understandable. We all feel the pressure of rising costs, but let's be clear. Public safety infrastructure is a core responsibility of local government. Public safety should not be deferred for budget optics. The cost of inaction is higher, delaying response, increasing repair costs, and even liability if the hall fails in a crisis. The no-tax increases sounds good politically, but it's not a sound reason to deny essential infrastructure that protects lives. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity, and we are in a strong position to act. Most importantly, this is a core responsibility of local government and our elected officials. Thank you for letting me share my opinion. However, all that actually needs to be said, as Chief Chip said, is why are we even having this discussion? You need to apply for the grant to offset the cost for this firehouse, and it should be the only thing that the elected officials and committee should be considering at this point. Your personal opinions as elected officials should be superseded by the needs of those who voted for you. We should not be putting up roadblocks. We should be future-focused in applying for the grant and building a new house. We have the facts, the funding pathway, and the opportunity. Let's do the right thing together for Metropoese. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Sue Strugnell, 10007B, Glen Forest Way. I was a volunteer firefighter with Metropoese, as was Langford. I have attended funerals of firefighters that have passed away to cancer, cancers that we did not know about previously. When we are looking at a new fire hall, we need to be forward-thinking because there's always health discoveries that are being discovered, new cancers. Who knew the turnout gear was actually killing the firefighters? So, we do need to plan for the present and the future. If that big one happened overnight with the first people we'd be rescuing is our rescue crew, whose corpses are in the collapsed building, would you want to be responsible for that? Our current model of staffing as a pay-per-call is cost savings. What would be the amount of taxpayer money if we actually had to go to a full-time career fire crew? So, if you want to offset some of your funding, keep with our current pay-per-call method rather than paying even a couple of full-time career firefighters. And that's what all I've got to say. That's just some good thought. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jacob Lam, Metropoese Road. I am the Officer of Operations at the Fire Hall. I am Training Officer this year, and I'm President of this society. There's one other person who cares for these guys more than me, as chief. There's one other person who's in that hall more than me, and that's chief. I appreciate the fiscal pressure. I appreciate this hot potato that is in your guys' hand, and the music is running out. The fire hall is infrastructure. The discussion needs to be how we're gonna pay for it, not whether or not we build a new fire hall. The investment is in these people. The people, the community's children are at the fire hall. The strength of the community is measured by how we take care of our weakest and most vulnerable. And that is what we are doing. Give us a safe building. That's all we're asking. Give us a safe building. Give us something that's not gonna kill us. Give us something we can be proud of. Give us something you guys can hang your hats on and say that you did.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ellen Frisch, Perry Crossroad. I'm a familiar face to some of you. I'm going to speak more, I'm in favor of a fire hall. My background is in regulatory planning, community development, and I think to echo Sasha's comment, this is the most cut-and-dry exclusion application the ALC will have ever seen. I refer to a very similar application received and approved by the ALC 59930 for exclusion of six hectares of lands in their recreation area to include a fire hall. There are two challenges here, though. I hear the immediacy of this, and even putting in portables next to the fire hall would require a non-farm use permit because of the situation we're in now. The ALC is years behind in their review of applications, and I know the last approval for the fire training towers took 16 months to approve a non-farm use for that, the erection of that, which just came last November. So, if we're thinking about wanting to deal with the immediate environmental concerns we're having, you know, I think there used to be some outside-the-box thought on that. I think that's aside. I think that's a side, that's a side question to whether the build happens. I support the exclusion application, and I think the location is perfect for all the reasons that have been expressed tonight, critical proximity to central locations and other services and training needs. I think that's about it, and I want to say it's a very emotional night. My daughter was almost, Sue was almost the last person my daughter saw. I still appreciate her wherever she is.
Thanks, Ellen.
Good evening, Kathy Atherton, 4995 LeBlanc Road. First, I want to thank the Fire Hall Steering Committee for all the hard work that they did, because I know there was countless hours put into that, and a lot of thought. And I read through the whole package for tonight's meeting, and there seems to be a very clear-cut case for going ahead with a new fire hall and at least exploring the options. And the ALR situation seems to be, as Ellen was saying, sort of tailor-made. It's already in the permitted uses to do the fire hall. So there's obviously options you can pick, that you were given us to how to go about doing that with the exclusions, et cetera. But it looks like a case can be made for proceeding with the whole thing. And I guess I just add as a last point. I've had two sons who were in the very forefront of the junior firefighter program, and they learned some wonderful skills, wonderful life skills, communication skills, and it was like just a great grounding for them. And I so appreciate and understand what a huge effort the volunteers put in. And a huge thank you to them for that. Okay, bye.
Thank you.
Hi, Kerry Patton from Sandgate Road as well. I'm not, you know, there's been excellent support here for building a fire hall. I'm not going to repeat many of the things that people said. But I do support the new fire hall, and I do believe it should be built next door to prevent any discontinuation of service. But a big thing that I also think we have to think about is that we need to build a facility that's going to attract volunteers in the future. By looking at a lot of these, our volunteer firefighters, thank you for what you do, that I don't know for sure, but based on their ages, many of them may be interested in full-time firefighting. And I know that our department or the volunteer department is a lot of training. And I know that there are opportunities for firefighters right now, but things change over the years. And there may not be as many opportunities for full-time firefighters in the coming years, potentially. And if we don't have a facility that can attract people to be there on the long term, even when there potentially aren't jobs in firefighting, that hall could be empty. So I just think we need to keep that in mind, that we build a facility for the future that attracts people to come and volunteer for us. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone else?
Sherry Rourke, Rocky Point Road. I'm here as a resident and also as the chair of the Michozen's Healthy Communities Advisory Select Committee. I had a lot to say, but I think everybody that's spoken before me has said a lot, so I'll be brief. I think what I most appreciated here tonight, in addition to support for the fire hall, was acknowledgement from longtime local farmers who pointed out that that piece of land identified for the new location is not viable for agriculture. I think we need to remember that these are passionate advocates for preserving farmland with experience in agricultural policy development, and their input should carry heavy weight in this conversation. Most importantly, I think advancing this process sends a clear and positive message that Michozen respects and supports its emergency personnel and is committed to investing in their safety and well-being. These are people who respond to medical emergencies, fires, rescues, and more. We rely on them, and they should be able to rely on us. What's loud and clear is that we can't keep doing nothing. We can't leave our firefighters in a facility that fails basic health and safety standards. They protect us. It's time we act to protect them. And finally, I really think we need to shift the tone in this community. This should be something we celebrate, not fear. This is a building that will provide a safe, healthy, functional workplace for the people who serve and protect us. It's an investment in public safety, emergency preparedness, and long-term community resilience. We should be treating it as a positive step forward for Michozen. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak at the microphone this evening? Okay, thank you for everybody that spoke. Let's move along in our agenda. On page three, we're moving to reports. This is the Fire Hall Feasibility Study, Fire Hall Steering Committee Chair's Report Update. Thank you, Mike.
So the chair, the purpose of the steering committee, I think, as we all know, was to engage with consultants as we, as we sorted through what the needs of the fire hall was. And so from there, we basically came up with the engineers' reports, hazardous materials reports, several engineers' reports, hazardous materials reports, and the architectural consultant that sort of led us to the conclusion of the different feasibility study options and siting and space gap and so on. Yeah, so the outcome seems to be that the preferred option, which is Option 1A, it basically lays out a new fire hall in the adjacent lot, which gives us a few different advantages there. If we build new next door, we've got cost control. We don't have to disrupt the fire service during construction, and we don't have to set up temporary facilities, which would be costly as well. And that we'd also wouldn't necessarily need to realize any demolition expenses. We could possibly repurpose the building or some of it, or something to that effect. So I think there's a lot of financial advantages over and above the no-disruption of service.
Also, you've... Speak into the mic. Okay. Mike, that you've noticed, or you've listed a number of questions here. I'm just wondering if you can go through them. Hopefully, at the end of the evening, we'll have more insight into the answers. We don't have to answer them directly right now, but if you could list the questions.
How's that? Better? Okay. So question one is, should the district proceed with a full replacement Option 1A or explore retrofitting despite the cost limitations? So I think that's question number one, and really, that stems around the apparatus bay. So the apparatus bay is clearly the newest and best part of that building, although it falls severely short of what the current code requirements would be. So option two, or question two, is council willing to direct use of ALR land for this critical infrastructure? So that would require a application to the ALC to get a non-farm use permit or remove it from the agricultural ground reserve. Then I guess question three would be, do we repurpose the apparatus bay or decommission it if we're to build next door? And then that would lead to question four, which, if we can get those couple of directions, then we could continue with our feasibility study. The consultant could complete his class D estimates and conceptual drawings.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move along to page three, or sorry, page seven. It's in architecture. Ed, are you going to take this online?
I'm available to answer any questions. What, what, what can I help here?
Page seven, yeah. CA Opayet, can you help lead us?
Yeah, I can do that through the chair and through the committees and to the general public. Welcome. So maybe I'll just go through a little bit of dialogue and history and purpose for tonight. Tonight is an opportunity for the committees to have a discussion about the, where we're at in the process. Where we're at in the process is that we've had our consultant finalize his report. His report is comprehensive, and I'll just quickly go through the table of contents to give everybody some context of the information that's provided to the committees tonight. And this information will be available to the public, for sure. There has been weekly meetings. I'd like to thank Mike, the chair, for dedicating a whole bunch of his time to the process, meeting with the consultants, and formulating information for the steering committee that was concise and understandable, so they could have good dialogue. And so that has all occurred in the last six months. Steering committee meetings have been open to the public, and the public have had an opportunity to have engagement as well. The table of contents, I'll just go through the table of contents in summary. And it'll help the committee tonight to draw some questions or some conclusions. It's a lot of information. It's a lot of technical information. I wanted to thank the fire chief and her staff for providing the consultants with the bulk of the historical and technical information that they know of in the building. There's a summary of the document that's a quick read. I recommend people read the summary. The existing building and the site description. We spent a month gathering historical data on the building and providing the historical information to the consultants and all of the relevant information we had on the building as far as technical documents, so they would have a good baseline understanding of the current situation. The needs analysis was conducted over approximately a month to two months period, where the architect grilled the members of the working and steering committee and the fire chief and the deputy fire chief on specifically what the needs of our program is. Our program is unique. Our program is amazing, and our fire department is amazing. And the information gathered in that two, one-to-two-month process is vital to the design of the facility. That has been very well received by the architect and to the extent where they were able to do a space analysis based on the needs of the fire department, and the space analysis is also provided in the report. Program deficiencies were worked upon as well for a few weeks to understand where the gaps are in the program and where the gaps are in the facility and how the two interrelate to each other. And that analysis also helps to provide for future data and future information for a more robust and efficient fire department. The cost analysis is quite a bit more technical. In the way it's listed in the report, the cost analysis is based on what the deficiencies are in the building and in the technical format and what would be required to meet those deficiencies. A full cost of the facility is premature at this time because we were working on a number of options. The option, the design documents are provided in the report. There's a number of options that were reviewed and analyzed by the committee. And the options analysis, quite frankly, we got to a point where we need direction from council. At this point in the process, the option, we need to get to a decided-upon option to move along in the process. So that's part of the reason why we're here tonight. Pros and Cons is a very interesting read. The pros and cons analysis explains information about the current facility and what the pros and cons of utilizing current facility are. I recommend people read that. Through all of that information and the hard work of everybody involved, architect took the information and presented what they would consider their professional opinion on a preferred option. And that's what we paid $80,000 for, and that's what's in our report for council and the committee to discuss tonight. So as you can see, that's a lot of information, and it's, it's, it's a daunting task for the two committees to digest it all. I really recommend questions and answers tonight would be valuable for the architect who's online to listen in. What was the first question?
No, that, that's good. That's great. Why don't we start with questions for the architect? So why don't we start with why Option 1A? Why the preferred option, Ed? Can you give us the rationale for that? Thank you.
Yeah, certainly. The... There's, some of them have already been mentioned, but there's just a number of efficiencies. Number one, there is no interruption to the operations of the fire hall facility if we, if a new facility was built on the adjacent property. There's, so that's number one. So there's no interruption. There's no requirement to have a temporary facility. That might be obvious. There's also, you're left with a asset for your community and the, particularly the apparatus bay, but it's not unreasonable to consider other uses for the rest of the existing fire hall. Also, the adjacent property is very well-sited, where it's within the community. Its location has good street access. It has, it's an appropriate width to permit returning fire vehicles to go up one side of the building and not interfere with the, any exiting vehicles. So that's very good street drainage and circulation. It's relatively flat. And, you know, that, that supports everything from limiting the amount of site work required to providing this relatively flat training surfaces and spaces for parking and other uses. So there's, there's, you know, quite a few benefits to having the building immediately adjacent to your existing property. It seems like a perfect solution, to be honest. In a nutshell.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Counselor Chukun, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mary Little, for you. The, the question that, yeah, to me, the key question right now is not whether we need a new fire hall. I think that, that has been said. But the question that's sort of lurking is a new apparatus, sorry, upgrade the apparatus bay or a new building. What was a powerful concept for me in reading the material is the concept of cost control. And I was wondering if we could ask our architect to maybe get into that a little bit more. And I suspect that there's some significant lived experience at the table here with the concept of cost control. What I have read from it, though, just to sum up, is that if we are to upgrade the existing apparatus bay, we may not know the full cost until we dig into it, and we are likely to spend a lot of money to likely not get to a suitable solution. But I would like to hear from our paid consultant, our consultant here with the expertise, and also Mr. Horneck as well, and others, if I could.
Okay, thank you, Ed, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the um at, at first glance, the apparatus bay seems like quite a robust um building that could be easily repurposed. Um, the, the two uh structural engineers' assessments point out some of the, with a lot of clarity, some of the structural deficiencies. Um, one thing we tried to do in our report was to um provide the comparison, um, you know, what a, a, a modern um best practice uh typical apparatus bay would uh look like in terms of um overall size and, and some of the configurations of some of what we call the operational spaces. So, not the admin, not the quarters, but where the, where the firefighters are, um, you know, doing work related to their trade. So, it's a, it's stark contrast in terms of scales, number one. The, the building, uh, it's a little unknown in terms of uh how do, how do quantify the costs? What we tried to do was to identify the shortcomings and do a thorough analysis of the existing building um to uh understand uh all the parts that needed to be upgraded. Um, you know, we started that with the, with the first thought, this would be simply uh a great opportunity to repurpose and save some money. Uh, but as we dug into it, it became quite apparent that there, there really was a lot of um shortcomings in the building. Uh, you, you know, for when it was built, it was uh likely a, a great solution and met the needs, but um, of course, with code changes in time and um, you know, approaches to uh firefighting and um operations within fire departments, uh things have changed and uh, you know, the knowledge base around um contamination and so on has, uh, there's been a lot of research and a, a lot of progress has been made. So, uh, what we, we found, if I'm, let's say, just speaking strictly about costs for operating the facility to meet code, we realized that there would be additional design needed by structural engineer among, uh, you know, a team of engineers to um design in solutions that could then be costed. Uh, so at this early stage, um, we are unable to uh with certainty say it would cost X dollars or in the range of, um, because it's um, you know, some of it would be guesswork and um we don't have a very high comfort level with um the type of guesswork we'd have to do. Is uh, hopefully that leads me towards answering your question.
Uh, Counselor Chukwun, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Ed. Um, I wonder if Mr. Horneck might also address that as well? And speaking of the likes.
I think the nutshell with the apparatus bay is that if you read the engineer's report, the secondary one from uh recent, uh, the foundations need heavy, heavy upgrading. Uh, the wall structures, uh, basically what happens is the, the wall panels aren't held together enough, so directly needs a concrete skin all the way around the building with rebar anchored into what would be a new foundation we put underneath the existing in key locations. And for a new concrete wall around the existing building, take the whole roof structure off because it doesn't meet any site uh snow load requirements or seismic requirements, put a new roof structure on top. And steel bracing inside so the walls don't buckle under a seismic activity. Exterior buttress walls on the four corners, um, which would be east and west walls, east and west corners to hold the lateral stability because of the garage doors. And that's theoretically what the structural upgrades would be, not to mention all the other uh, the mechanical, electrical ventilation. And so when you dig deep into any renovation, be it residential, uh, commercial, or this being emergency building is required to be post-disaster, you can't go too far along with uh any sort of structural upgrades or any heavy renovations without bringing the whole building up to code. So, it, the reality is, is there's everything needs to be upgraded, the walls need to be upgraded, the foundation needs to be upgraded, the roof needs to be replaced, there needs to be additional reinforcements inside and out, and all the electrical, mechanical ventilation, there's not much left. Yet, it's a good building for another purpose. You know, there's nothing si- necessarily wrong with the building for uh non-emergency purpose, but you, it's, to bring it up to code for its intended use is a little far-fetched to my. And so therefore, the costing of that, it's, it's complicated because there would be, you could spend a lot of time, as Ed said, with a lot of different engineers to design a ventilation system, to do an electrical engineer for the electrical system that would have to be replaced and upgraded because you're taking the whole building apart and then putting it back together again. Plumbing system, all the structural requirements, and then get into the costing of it from there. You know, so that's what it would take to get some sort of accurate take on it. And so when you, when you put all that together, it takes, the big killer there is time. So how much time do we spend on that? We've got a seven million dollar grant potential that I understand we've got a fairly good shot at. Uh, that we have to have everything in by September. So, if we move forward with option one A in a sense, that gives us a fairly easy path forward with a fairly reasonable cost control on, it should be able to achieve that, I think.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Ed, on page nineteen of your report, you have a list of the pros and cons of the evaluation of keeping the existing um apparatus bay. And so one thing that we haven't talked about is we could keep it and repurpose it for something else. Um, uh, can you speak to that and then also speak to the pros and cons?
So, uh, absolutely. Um, as Mike said, uh, the, the building itself is structurally sound. Uh, but it's just not, of course, um, as we've been speaking to, meeting the criteria around post-disaster. So, uh, you know, it, it's um a relatively robust building. But again, uh, it's extremely difficult to bring it up to code for the um purposes in a firefighting facility. So, uh, you know, it's some, these buildings are, they could either be for commercial use, it could for spring or, you know, winter equipment for parks or anything. So, it's reasonable to, to um change use that building for, you know, I can see with anything vehicle related. And it's uh great as there's the large overhead doors and, and so on. So, um, you know, I can see a, a myriad of uses uh for a municipality. So I think that, that has a, a great potential for um uh continuing in its lifespan in a useful manner. Um, the rest of the building, on the other hand, it's debatable what it could be used for, but there is also potential. Uh, but you know, there, there's been uh some comment on the um, the state of the, the roof and the water leaking and the, the age of the building and so on. So, um, repurposing um some of the smaller, like the administrative quarter side of the existing building, um, you might face some challenges, but uh I think especially with the app, existing apparatus bay, I would think they have um a good potential for you reuse in another uh manner. So, if I just talk about the um pros and cons here for a moment, we, we really looked at um, sorry, did you say page nineteen? Just bear with me one sec. Uh, do you mean, do you mean the pros and cons on page twenty-one?
Item number six point zero, pros and cons.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, so I feel like we touched on some of these. Now, um, it, in terms of the process of um, of uh building a new facility, you, you have an existing fire hall, there's a lot of costs related to temporary uh relocation and temporary facilities. The, the, it's a lot of value in the uh firefighting equipment and um particularly the large vehicles, and they're not meant to be stored outside. And so it's quite important that you have um a covered space and these large tent structures need to be heated and overhead doors and so on. And you'd have to have that sort of uh, I just see tent because that's what we typically work with in the past. Those sort of structures in place for a year plus as a, as um, you know, a hall is demolished and then rebuilt and it's probably more likely in the fourteen, fifteen month range. Uh, so there's, there's month after month of um costs related to uh housing the fire staff, um, including, you know, um showers and washrooms and um meeting space and kitchen space and administrative space and, and sort of so on. And of course, um, when we've done temporary facilities in the past, they've been um you know, significantly smaller than the fire halls that they're um, they're um, we're replacing going to be, but there's still a lot of pieces to it. And so there's a lot of costs associated with that. And then, of course, you have to find a spot for it. So, the fact that um by um, by uh not keeping the existing fire hall, sorry, by, by building on a new site, uh, you can retain some of the fire hall and you can also operate in it while other one is building, so uninterrupted operation is probably the, the biggest consideration. Now, we, you know, when we get to the cons, there, and there's there's, there's a myriad of, of um, of issues as it relates to the existing fire hall. And integrating an existing fire hall into a new facility presents some challenges as well. So, um, you know, I'm sort of stretching of what the question was asking, but we looked at options um which related to keeping some of the fire hall, specifically the apparatus bay. And, and so even that presented us with some challenges um around integrating two different structures and how do you make them connect, how do you make that connection? And it's very unlikely that the uh new structure would be a concrete um box like the existing apparatus bay. And so therefore, there's um uh different, it's um expansion and contraction and movement reactions for, for the building. So, so there's, there's um sort of a, a series of issues that arise. You know, as, as Mike, as Mike said, there's, there's a lot of issues with upgrading the building. And so it, in, you know, in a nutshell, it just um, we, we did that analysis not within the agenda, but with the aim of trying to present um as much actual content as possible. Um, it just, it seemed to come up that there is um a, a lot of limitations with uh keeping the existing building and with the purpose of reusing it and repurposing it for a new uh, you know, uh, into the new fire hall. Um, one of the, one of the biggest issues, of course, with the fire hall um as it exists is not only the not only the shortcoming structurally, but programmatically. There is, uh, we have some diagrams which indicate what the size of a um new apparatus bay would be, as I'd mentioned earlier, some commentary versus the existing one. But in, in addition to that, the overhead doors are too small for the existing equipment. The, or, I mean, they can get it out, but there's extreme care taken to, to bring vehicles out in and on the facility. Uh, there's uh clearances around, um, you know, around the vehicles and extremely limited. Um, there's been, um, some of the uh public speakers have uh mentioned um the decontamination and so on and lack thereof in the facility. So, um, you know, all those spaces wouldn't have to be uh migrated out of that apparatus bay into the new facility. So there's lots of programmatic problems as well as um, as well as structural problems. So it's a, it's a complicated series of, of um reactions to bring this building uh into a state that could be reused. Uh, but the, 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 it, having said all that, it is a facility that could be repurposed for other uses.
Okay.
Sometimes I ramble, hopefully that was.
Yep, that's great, that's great. Uh, Counselor Gray.
I just had a question for Mr. Horneck and, and perhaps for Mr. Craig. And that was, my understanding is under the B C building code that if the district were to renovate this building um for its, to continue its current purpose, uh simply the renovation, that we actually have a choice as to how far we go in terms of the code improvements, it's not an automatic requirement. Is that true?
Uh, maybe I could start this one, Mike. Um, so, there's, there's a, a few different pieces to that. In addition to the code, I um would find it very unlikely that the um consultants would sign off uh on a building that uh with the amount of renovation required um wouldn't fully meet the code. Um, I, it's a it's interesting because um the Vancouver Building Bylaw, which is essentially the B C building code with a few uh minor amendments to it, uh, one thing we do have is a good section on uh what triggers upgrades and what the state of the upgrades um are required. So many municipalities use the, the triggers section in the Vancouver Building Bylaw as um, as sort of a basis for um understanding what the required upgrades would be in a building. So like your question is how much has to be done and does, do we have to go all the way? And um, so we did an analysis of this through the lens of the Vancouver Building Bylaw and it was a, a total upgrade on virtually all systems, electrical, mechanical, structural and um because the building was just not far behind. In terms of the um uh consultant team, I, I don't think, uh, you know, the the architects and I can't speak to the other engineers, but our number one priority, our number one priority, we take an oath when we're, we're when we become an architect is public safety. So it's, it's hard to um consider uh signing off on a building of, you know, for this purpose uh with some of the shortcomings particularly around life safety.
Okay, a second question.
Yeah.
Thanks very much. I think the answer is that um, yeah, that we do have the ability to build to less than the code. Um, but the issue is figuring that out. Um, my next question was in regard to
Uh, hold on, I, I don't, I don't think that's what he said. Um, is that what you said, that we, we have the ability to build to lesser of a code? I thought we had to build to code.
Well, I, there, there is a point. And the, the, if we took the apparatus bay as an example and we wanted to um only do some limited upgrades to um continuous operation as a as a uh, as an apparatus bay within the fire hall. The level of construction required to bring it up to post-disaster, which is a requirement um in the code that's very clear for this type of facility would beyond a doubt, uh, and with certainty require full upgrade of the building. I think there is some gray area where um authorities have jurisdiction. Um, and I imagine that is council and mayor um are able to say, we don't have to meet this this part of the code, but then responsibility is, is on the shoulders of, of the authority. So, um, you know, yeah, I just um expressed caution um with the idea of not um, fully uh meeting the code. And, and the other, the other pieces of codes are um continually advancing. And um, you know, we might end up being significantly further behind in another six years when a new code comes out.
Okay, Counselor Gray.
I guess my follow-up question was, I've been looking around and you've got a heck of a lot more experience, obviously, than someone like me. But when I see um fire halls that have been replaced, uh, you know, searching on the web in British Columbia, I haven't found anything as new as our building. The ones that have been replaced are about expansion. The ones that have been replaced are about expansion, but actually replacements. A Sanchez number two in nineteen seventy three, Quarter Island nineteen seventy. Nelson's was built in nineteen thirteen, and I'm on nineteen eighty four. They've all been replaced in the last few years. Is there anything in the province that's been replaced, built in the nineteen nineties? That um was built for seismic upgrading rather than expansion?
Well. Uh I mean, uh the the it's a tricky question because only part of your building was built in nineteen nineties, just the apparatus bay. Everything else is uh fifty sixties and been no since then. So so um. I don't know of something so recent as nineteen ninety. Um but having said that, it's uh I can't speak to the state of the buildings that were renovated and to what extent. I I know this particular code from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty four. Um especially uh with uh can with structural consideration was a big leap. So um although you were behind in the um previous. Um you know, even two years ago, now uh is a significant jump forward. So in a very short amount of time. Um all these buildings have been, you know, um. Cast in a spot of when it's time for upgrade to require a significant upgrade.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Shook.
Thank you, Mayor Little. I I I wonder if I could just um make a reference to the Skyline Engineering Report that I think is relevant to this discussion right here. I seem to recall in that report. There's a reference to documentation that was missing in terms of. How the old the apparatus bay was built. Uh is that am I correct in that? I I believe it. Okay, leave it to me. Um I think the the point, I guess, I'm trying to, I I would make to this. Is one of the reasons maybe why we're here now. Is because the apparatus bay, well, of course, it does not meet standard. So why would we even fathom? Building something that does not meet the highest standard of the day? I I guess that that's a big question, but sorry, my more more direct question to um to Ed, to Mr. Horne. Um. When we go after and plan for a building like this, how long do we expect lifespan to be? I mean, I brazenly said. We need to be building for the next generation and think about seventy five years, but what is how long? What is the lifespan of a building like this?
Um we we sorry, Mike, I'll be brief. Uh we'd expect at least seventy five years and and um. Uh he there's there's a few things. So um it's it's kind of like um. Uh an athlete that sprints, you know, in the sixties, they were doing it in twelve seconds to a hundred meters, and now they're doing it, they only um improving by tiny increments. Maybe this is. Very poor analogy. Point being is apparatus, the the larger equipment is only getting so big, it's kind of maxed out. There's um you know, roads are a certain size, we all live in our certain size. So equipment is not getting. Um bigger. So the idea that apparatus base will be undersized, they may not be enough apparatus base. But it's unlikely the building uh will be undersized to handle equipment growth. Um and then we try and build in um some uh future uh expansion potential into the design. Um oh whether it's uh you know, the the uh open spaces on the side to go sideways or. Um the potential to go up if needed and. Um you know, when we're dealing with uh two story construction, even even on a wood frame. It's uh there's usually potential to to go up as well. So there's um. There's lots of opportunity for um uh you know, the building to to live and have renovations part of the future.
Okay, thank thank you. Um so we are going to be talking about some of the um engineering. Um uh discussion points a little later in the agenda, specifically for the architect. Questions about the preferred options, what um was some of those uh nitty gritty, does the committee? Or the council have any questions? Brent Donaldson, go ahead.
Uh great, thank you. Uh just to get a little context, I I can speak for myself um from the folks that are at the podium here that. I don't think there's anybody at this table that uh is opposed to building a new fire station. So I just want to make that clear because. Certainly, I've got a little bit of an impression and that's the case. Certainly, it isn't for me. Uh when working at building a new uh apparatus bay, or what are your recommendations with regard to uh what you would build it out of? Would it be with construction steel? Um obviously, the concrete one that we have next door here hasn't uh served us too well if we're only getting thirty years out of it. So. You know, what would you recommend in looking into the future of a building that would last us seventy five years? Uh what sort of materials would you think would be acceptable for longevity for a building such as that? Thank you.
Um okay, I'll this for me as I would we um. We consider ourselves a sort of a wood first firm. We've had um. Uh uh for a number of reasons. Number one, it's uh. For the most for the most sustainable material uh for the site. Number two, it's um readily available and uh. Uh manufactured and and um sourced in B C often. Um and and number three has um a great structural capacity and uh even if its components, the building are um conventionally framed. Um they can be, they can easily be uh incorporated into a uh post disaster building. So. Um our uh envelopes are very robust uh in terms of um, you know, we always pick materials that uh. We have to understand that the building, the intent is to be uh in operation for for. Uh you know, up seventy five years. So we're looking at a cladding materials and exterior envelope systems that. Um are built for longevity. So we stay away from. Um you know, wood siding and some some other materials like that, which which um uh lend themselves to decay over the years. Uh so the we we start um from the approach that. Uh the building is um going to be around for a long time. And and uh we consider um the wood first uh to be uh in line with that. Now, in terms of um steel and um concrete. Uh with those aren't our favored um primary um uh construction materials. Um they're a little less sustainable, but um uh also along with the steel, there comes a lot of um. You know, uh detailing and um the issues with um. Transfer of heat through the through the facades. We had to do it with extreme care. Uh concrete tends to um, you know, add a a little cost to the project. Um this if you can imagine suspended slabs and. And thick walls and so on, and those after that have to be um clad and finished inside and out. So. Um it tends to add more cost to do um uh concrete construction. Uh so our our approach generally, we found a lot of success with with wood products.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh thanks again. Uh just getting back to uh the existing apparatus base. Um would there be the possibility if uh we were to look at uh remodeling them or bringing them up to code? That part of the uh recommendations in the report regarding the dirty side of the fire hall, ECON, gear storage and the like. Could that be part of the stabilization of the current structure?
Are you um I'm trying to understand the question. Are you suggesting that? Um using the some of the program spaces to structurally support. And and be part of the upgraded structure of the. Of the um upgraded apparatus bay?
Uh yes, so we'd be looking, say, looking down on the structure from the air. It would be moving into the area where the A L R is. Um I know there's uh comments in your report with regard to separation from living spaces and alike. And that if in addition was put on the side of the structure. Uh could they that be part of the stabilization from a uh uh what's the word?
Oh.
You know, keeping the building from falling over.
Yeah, with seismically sort of integrated and be and support the existing building. I I think so. Now, you you know, I'm not a structural engineer and um there's two pieces to that. I feel like. Uh something new would have to be, um there's there's almost two approaches. Um if it's made of dissimilar materials like we're. Proposing wood, likely it would have a have a gap of some sort between the building and it would. Um have some separation. Uh I imagine that the design could purposefully include. Um you know, uh retaining walls and and so on, that would be perpendicular to the. To the uh existing apparatus bay that would lend it some of the support, but um. It's uh I could envision that that happening, but I can't really speak to. Um would that be a cost savings? It's really a complicated. Um uh detail that the structural engineers would really have to have to dive into. Uh not certainly not impossible, though.
Thank you.
I'd like to answer that that those options were addressed in the second skyline report and. Yeah, and so you could theoretically do that, and that would maybe take care of one. Quarter of the building or that side that it's taking care of. It is theoretically possible, but it doesn't quite do the entire job.
Yeah, uh yeah, respectfully, uh the last paragraph of the recent uh skyline report did uh make note that, you know, uh. And I obviously we're in an urgency situation with this grant money, so we're moving quicker. Than I certainly anticipated, but uh using some other contractor other than the folks that are doing the consulting here to get a. A bit of a idea on what, you know, the cost would be. Um certainly, when I got on the committee, my role wasn't to make decisions from an operational point of view. More just to look at it as a taxpayer and a long term resident and a firefighter for thirty five years. Um so I know the urgency part and I get that and a lot of folks are influenced by that. At the end of the day. You know, I feel that, you know, it's important that we look at that, turn that rock over, and unfortunately, I don't think we have time to do that. Certainly, it's noted in the last skyline report that that could be an option.
Okay, other questions uh for the architects? Councilor Donaldson or yep. Any specific questions for Ed? Okay, well, let's thank you, Ed, for being online for that. I appreciate it. Okay.
Pleasure.
Let's move along to the. Uh the engineering reports. Uh we've got, yeah, for the engineering reports, this starts on page seventy three. Um of the package. I'm going to ask the fire chief to start us off here. Yeah, go ahead.
I wonder if there's material in the architect's report that isn't um. So much architectural and it's been talked about by the public tonight. And I wondered if I if we might just pause for a minute about those issues. Um there's a series of them. The first time uh we heard tonight or the council's heard tonight, there's rats in the fire hall. Never heard about that before, but we've heard about concerns about mold. I'll just take a look at the list I have here. Now, I'm not sure I got it complete. Unsafe storage platform violating worksafe conditions. Um inadequate ventilation exposing our firefighters to excess vehicle exhaust. Sleeping quarters in a less adequate seismic building. And then uh issues around decontamination. So. As a medical doctor, you get concerned about the problems that are facing you right today. And then you've got the issue of problems that may come in the future that may never occur. So an earthquake is kind of like that. We think there may be one, but we don't know what's going to happen. Like someone with heart disease, um they may or may not have a heart attack. They may live their full life and die of something else. Um so I'm kind of concerned that this council uh take action on the health and safety issues now. If I could ask, and Eric, you're still here, or Ed, you're still here, how long from today if we said go? When would this building be completed?
You know, I would I would say um. Best guess is uh twenty months to twenty four months.
Two years. So I don't think we should leave our firefighters exposed in this way. I think we should put in an exhaust system immediately. It was previously um approved by count previous council, and I don't know if um the mayor and councillor Epp are involved in that. Previously approved and never happened. I think we should put it up there. I would suggest an ATCO trailer, get our guys sleeping, our guys and gals, sleeping outside of the building so that they're kept safe. Um I think the unsafe storage platform, let's take it down or or get it up to code. Uh I think waiting two years to do this is unfair to our volunteers and staff.
Yeah, um I've heard about rats in the fire hall for a long time. As a matter of fact, the staff here. Um are very reluctant to go up to the fire hall because when they did, there was a rat that fell from the ceiling in front of them. Uh so I think the rats in the fire hall is a great concern, and we've known about it for a while. Um I do agree that we've got uh many different health and welfare concerns. This. Compounds the this. I'm just going to ask the C A O to comment on this and then Councilor Donaldson.
Oh, sorry, I didn't jump the queue, I hope. Um maybe a question for Mike or the architect. If um if we were to. Re like look at the ventilation system or the H P A. Um or and or look at some other. Like fundamental parts of the building to make it safe currently. Would that trigger a full? Building code requirement for the building? Is there a trigger point when you start working on a building that you have to meet? Suddenly, oh, you're working on a building, you have to now meet. Code.
I I wouldn't think if a ventilation system specific to that, um you'd uh get some. Get the rodents out of there and maybe do some mold removal, but I wouldn't see that triggering any serious event of code compliance at that point.
Thank you. Councilor Donaldson.
Thank you. Um. The the issue of mold we've heard for a very long time. I'm surprised it still is an issue. When we dealt with um they call it the leaky condo for years and years and it all got taken care of. Uh so we've known about that for quite some time. We've. Rats can be dealt with as well. The one concern I had had as well, um. Having been uh affiliated with with um. Fire departments is the exhaust. And number of years ago, just as a citizen who used to uh go to all sorts of budget meetings. This was something that was brought forward by our fire chief. And and I never understood why we never implemented, although there was a council at the time who said, no, don't do that. Uh we have applied for so many grants. Over the years that this has never actually come back to us, at least in this term. Um we've uh it's never come out of budget meeting in the ones that I've been to. So I'm not sure why we've allowed it to get so bad. Um and you know, some of these things we can deal with. It probably wouldn't. It's day to day stuff. So to keep people safe today. And not wait another moment longer, we have the we have the financing to be able to do that or the funds. Um to do that. So so those minor details we should deal with now. Uh so that people are comfortable being in that building, coming and going. Um I don't think that it's a it's a huge cost. It it does certainly. And I'm not an expert in this, but would would probably not interfere with this project that we're talking about tonight. So if people are feeling that insecure. We need to deal with it today, not six months, twelve months or two years from now. And and not to be the total cost for a rebuilding. That's that's important as well, but. Those are immediate things that we have the ability to deal with today.
Okay, thank you. Fire chief, could you comment on the exhaust system and why that hasn't been um fixed?
Yes, thank you. And maybe a few of the other items as well, if that's possible. Um so the issue with the exhaust, we have um. Always been a concern for us. We did have worksafe out to uh recommend. It's always been promised to us that we were eventually going to be um getting a new fire hall. We've had that. Yes, we're gonna do that. We're gonna do that. We're putting money away in the the uh the fund. Great. So at the time, we um brought WorkSafe out to make some recommendations and he suggested doing what we have are doing now. And that is we have a policy that when before any apparatus starts, we open the bay doors. And we have uh monitors on in the ceiling around to monitor and an automatic. We do have some uh extract extractors there, but they don't actually attach to the exhaust. So we have, you know, this Band-Aid until such time as we actually get a new vehicle extraction system or exhaust extraction system. They do run, if we were to buy and completely install in there, you're looking at around the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. So that's what it would cost to uh install, for example, a neaderman in there. So as far as the mold and the rats, um it's been ongoing problems. We brought somebody in to test for mold. Uh we did do a few of the mitigation uh recommendations. The challenge is is that we have that the roof continually leaks. There's continually moisture in there. So the mold will continual continually grow. We have asked to have the roof replaced. And uh many, and this is going back now several years, at the time, uh roofers didn't want to touch the roof because it was so bad. Um so we've done again a little bit of repair, Band-Aids, you know, put a little goo here and there and stop the leaks. Um but the water still leaks in. It needs a full replacement of the the roof. And with that now, potentially even some of the the trusses inside, they're starting to rot. So I mean, it it is, it's not so easy just to say we can just start this. It's once you crack that open, you might find some other things that are in there. And again, I go back to, there hasn't been the desire previously based on communication I've had with um previous councils to move forward with the new fire hall or to actually put any money into repairing the fire hall as it sits right now. So it is not that I haven't tried and it's not that I don't care about the safety of my firefighters at all. Um it's just been struggled.
Can I re-ask my question, Chair? So in the line of what she just the chief just said, if we start down the process of mold remediation and then find out that we have to replace trusses and whatever else, what's the trigger? What when do we trigger a building code compliance? Like, at what point does that happen? I know it happens at a certain point, but when does that happen?
Okay, Counselor Gray.
I think the answer to that is that it's up to the district under the provincial building code to decide um how far you went. If you need to um meet the building code requirements and you can set it at the district level. Um but but so we could focus on mold, but I think we heard about unsafe storage platforms. I'll just go through the list. The decontamination issues, that we need a bathroom that people is what I'm reading, a washroom where people can um have a shower and get um um their uniforms off, inadequate ventilation for the vehicle exhaust and sleeping quarters in an in an unsafe um seismic building. I think they demand action now.
Yeah, I'm Steve Malko. Go ahead.
So I'm Steve Malko. I've been a structural engineer since two thousand and six. Um the answer is five percent. We can modify or add a doorway and we can affect the seismic capacity of a building by five percent. And after that, we need to make seismic accommodations. We need to add chair walls. We need to take considerations. Um with respect to the HVAC adding stuff, as soon as you do that, we need to condition to consider the additional loads. So the neaderman, yes, there's a cost for that, but we already, we have two reports that discuss the inadequacy of the existing roof, so we can't start bolting anything to it. It's inadequate. All these components need a professional to stand behind. No professionals will stand behind something if they aren't like I won't unless I'm confident that the existing structure can support it and carry it down to the foundation. So we're looking at bits and pieces, but but the actual implementation of it, when you start bringing professionals in to to actually implement this, it 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 becomes quite that that's where the whole thing spans into a full, full renovation.
And so one of the things we could do is is rent or buy a portable uh for sleeping quarters and for the administration who are there eight, nine, ten hours a day. Um and to get them out of the the uh old part of the building temporarily before we have a new fire hall rebuilt.
Sure, that that's a possibility. What what I'm sort of saying suggesting is that any upgrades to this existing structure would likely incur like substantial structural upgrades to in order just to add these small components that we discussed.
And what about the decontamination? How could we mitigate that? How can we fix that issue right now uh in the interim before we have a new fire hall?
I I couldn't speak to that as structural.
Yeah, ATCO trailer. You can, you you know, we have around the province work camps that have all the function, you know, functions of um that we're talking about and all done with trailers. I just think um so I so I just don't want us to stop and say, oh, guess we can't do it. It's like, no, let's take a look at this and let's see what we can do. Um I was listening tonight what people were saying. Um I've heard before about some concerns. It seems to me we should be acting on them rather than avoiding a couple of years. That's these young people here for another couple of years um being exposed the way that maybe they shouldn't be. Unless perhaps uh what we heard from the chief a moment ago, that we can relax about ventilation because WorkSafe has told us how to do it. And then let's just follow their their ideas, what they've told us to do, and let's make a note of that in our report that that's taken care of. I think it's we, you know, one or the other.
Counselor Gray or Counselor Counselor.
Sure, yeah. Thank you very much, Mayor Little. Um as important as this topic is, it's a topic that we're not here to talk about. We're here to talk about proceeding with a new hall or not or a modification of that. That is where the fundamental question lies. Um I would suggest that Counselor Gray, if he wants to bring this forward in a in an orderly way, um maybe brings it back to one of our meetings and we can talk about mitigation efforts. I I think it is important and maybe there's things we can do. But the issue before us right now is moving ahead with 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 a plan. And and again, if if that had been done two years ago, ten years ago, we would be on much better ground. We wouldn't even be talking about some of the health and safety issues. So I think we should focus on that. If if there's some of these other questions, we can bring them back. I would suggest bringing them back separately.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Um I had a discussion with the fire chief and the C A O in the interim. We've got some more meetings coming up. We can bring it back. Yeah.
Sorry, my um intention was not to be disorderly, but rather address the problems presented as to us tonight. And many of these issues are justifications for building of the hall, so they're entirely appropriate to be discussing discussing this evening, in my view.
Okay, so let's get back to the agenda. This gets back to what we we have on the agenda.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
Just to say, these issues are dealt with in the documents that we're looking at, and we heard tonight from people about the health and safety issues. Uh it's not about getting back to our agenda. This is part of the agenda.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um we, I think, I don't think there's anybody at this table or even in this room that is not concerned about the welfare of the firefighters. We will do something. And as opposed to uh pointing fingers and being negative, I want to commend this council for moving this forward because past councils have done the opposite. They've moved it down the line for other councils to deal with. So these are difficult di- discussions. I understand that, but difficult discussions need to be had. And we need to uh talk about the safety and welfare welfare of our firefighters in the future and today. I've just said that I will speak to the C A O and the fire chief and we will bring back a lined item to talk about the safety and welfare of the firefighters today. So uh Fire Fire Chief Dunlop, can we move along to the engineering reports? If you could introduce that and then perhaps uh Mr. Malko can speak to that specifically. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Uh I guess we're going to review the skyline engineering report of uh April twenty-second and the other, the second report from Skyline on May twenty-fourth and the RISAC ge- geotechnical report on April nineteenth. And I am going to defer to Steve Malkow, the engineer, um who can speak to this much more clearly than I can.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. So as part of the steering committee, we wanted to know kind of where where the fire hall as it is right now, where it sits. Where are we at structurally with it? Chief had a report completed on the older structure. It was pretty unequivocally uh you know, there's no seismic consideration in the old part of the building. There's there's no, it was more or less condemned at that point. And that was a that was early days report that was completed. Um so that that to the steering committee was a non-issue as far as the old portion and our attention turned to the apparatus bay. And the question was, what what is its current condition and where does it sit? And so in relation to that, we engaged Skyline Engineering, Mike worked with them, and they did a a review uh the existing apparatus bay and provided the report. That initial report was in twenty-twenty-two. That's under the old British Columbia Building Code. And at that time, they identified a number of issues with the existing bay with respect to the gravity loading and the seismic loading of that. Those issues include uh uh like the the trusses being insufficient. That it doesn't meet post-disaster loading that under any current building codes that's available. Um you can, there is a paragraph in reference to Brent's question that uh almost no documentation was available even really from that original structure to determine what what standard even in nineteen ninety-three it was built to. So there's quite a few unknowns with that existing building. That's in the original report. That was twenty-twenty-two. After that was completed, we had a building code change and an upgrade. The new twenty-twenty-four British Columbia Building Code has substantially higher uh seismic criteria. It results in a substantially more well-designed building that's required to meet those criteria. You have to add a lot more structure in there to make it work. Skyline basically reviewed that original report and then added in their 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 new information now. Basically describing uh how difficult it would be to achieve any any upgrades to meet these new building code requirements. Again, that that's the the design of the roof system, the connection to the walls, the wall connections to each other, and then the connection down to the foundation. Taking the report as a whole, they they, I think, did a good job of just describing how extensive those upgrades would be in order for that building to meet the current twenty-twenty-four building code. As a professional, that's our standard that we work to. We we don't have any other standards that we that we, there there's additional that might be higher, but that's our minimum. British Columbia Building Code is our minimum standard that we need to work to. So when we're looking at any kind of renovation or any kind of new construction, we need to make sure that if if there's something existing there, that we're either well away from it, so it doesn't affect our new structure or that it's it's completely able to withstand these new 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 code forces.
Counselor Donaldson.
I have two questions for Mr. Malko. Um how often does the B C building code change?
We would see a change every four to five years roughly, so twenty-eighteen, the prior one was twenty-twelve, so about six years.
Regardless if it's a commercial, fire, emergency or residential.
So the way it works is there's actually a national building, the national building code is upgrades every on on that timeframe and B C follows shortly behind. So then we adopt the national building code with some slight adjustments. And then further, like Vancouver will pull from that as well and put in their unit.
Okay, so in my next question, um both skyline reports are very, very close in verbiage. And and so um my question is, did they actually come out and see it or they base it on all of the literature and the research that is available to them? And uh one of the things that keeps catching my eye is where they say you may wish to have a more detailed schematics, seismic upgrade plan prepared with sufficient details such as a qualified general contractor or qualified surveyor could provide order of magnitude costs, et cetera. Um can they not do that? Or do we or is this something that we should, maybe it's something advisable because they've said it twice now?
So so that paragraph is just, we we provide these services. But the first part of the question is, my understanding is they came out for the first report, did their analysis of the building and the the components. None of those components were changed after that. So there's no need for a sec, you know, if we had done some modifications or there had been some kind of change in the actual site, like it would understandable they would attend again. They did not, is my understanding. What changed in that time was the building code and so they re we had them redo the letter just we we do want to make sure, to make sure that that, you know, with the new building code where where it now stands. Second, second to to the schematics, you everything is is all about the details and connections, so every little piece in there would have to be designed and and looked at. And that's what they're sort of offering to get into.
Okay, Mike.
I just wanted to add to that that um secondary to uh him looking at the design forces for the the updated code. We looked at the different building design concepts that uh J D A had provided for us to see if they would do exactly what Bren was asking about. If we could put a new building beside this old building and, you know, bolt it together really well, would that help hold it up? And and so that was the advanced and more elaborate report secondarily that came.
Thank you. The reason I ask is because there are other fire departments who have done just that. So one of the older, older than ours, which is sandwich number one, has been reinforced and it's a two-story. The other ones now that they have, they are replacing. So it's because our apparatus bay is what just shy of thirty years. It's still the newest building we have here. Um man, mind you, it is an emergency building. So I'm just trying to comprehend from a layperson's perspective. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Steve.
What with respect to that too, those those forces would need to get to that new structure. So uh Skyline has identified that there's deficiencies in the building as far as the connections between the existing roof. So aside from the gravity loading, we would need to upgrade the existing trust system, which given the spans would be quite onerous. The connections would still all need to be upgraded. It's not as simple as just putting the new structure there to hold up this old one. Those forces all have to be able to be directed to that. So one way or another, you would you would need to do fairly substantial upgrades to that existing. It's in order to transfer them over to that building.
Bruce.
And and we still haven't addressed the idea that just um fixing the existing uh structure doesn't allow for the future discussion, uh equipment. Um it's inadequate as it is now in terms of door width. We haven't talked about that. Um those sorts of things that that uh would be in addition to making it more seismically uh sound as it stands right now, but it doesn't address the actual needs of the department moving forward.
Good point. Anybody else uh want to ask any questions of Steve or anybody else at this table regarding the uh of this the the uh reports, the RISAC report? Go ahead, Steve.
So um that was Skyline. We also, before we, as a steering committee, we knew that the existing site made the most sense, just essential in the community and it's worked well for years. What we wanted to know out of the gate was what is below and is it suitable for the new structure? There's no point in having these conversations, getting way down the road and then finding out there's a major geotechnical issue. So the steering committee chose to retain RISAC engineering. They're a local geotechnical firm. They're uh well-known and they're excellent at their job. Um they came, they did a drill test program, so it's not, you know, just a surface look. It's it's down to bedrock and they compiled a report. That report basically with, you know, the with the exception of bedrock would be the only better material you could possibly want to build on. It recommends shallow foundations. They're one and a half meters deep. We don't need to drill piles. We don't need any excessive kind of geotechnical. Need any excessive kind of geotechnical pre-loading. Um, the bearing capacities were excellent that they, they provided, now keep in mind, this is all for an older building code because. Now we're into the new one, but. But at the time, everything came back as a, a very glowing review of the site, which was, bodes well for, for a new, new structure.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Shukin.
So, um, question to Mr. Malco, um, thank you very much for being here and for your, your expertise, the um. The geotechnical work that was done, I'm assuming it didn't go over to the A L R side of the fields? And if it didn't, can we still base, um, you know, a sense of whether we can use the field on that information?
I would, I would expect, you know, in, in geotechnical terms, and I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but generally, things don't change immediately. In a couple hundred feet, it's a geological formation, so what we find in one place, we could, you know, a few hundred feet over infer that. It would be similar. The depth of the rock can change, that sort of, that, that, but fortunately, given the soils that are directly under. That's not a major concern for the city, so provided that, we, they would, you know. They would still do a, a full geotechnical survey if that was the new chosen spot to, to create a new design, we would have to obviously, but. But we can infer based on existing data that we have, at least that we know where, where. There's a very high probability of, of a very good site to build on.
Any other comments regarding the skyline report or the RISIC report, or any uh, questions to the fire chief? Um, at this time? Yeah, Counselor.
I just wondered, um, you know, how green will, would this new building be on the environmental standards? How green, like, you know, what level, like with the, with the step code and how uh. You know, is that included in the, in the new building code?
I, I would direct that question to, to Ed, but, but in general, lead and, and all those, those are included, the step code has increased substantially.
Yeah, Ed, could you comment on that, on how green, I guess it can be as green as we want it to be, but uh, uh. Could you comment on how environmentally friendly the new build uh, could be or would be? So we, we can't hear you.
Thank you, I was muted. Absolutely, the step code is sort of, uh, I would call it a moving target, but initially just applied to. Uh, residential and now it's, um, it's practically out, it's really, um, how the municipality adopts this step code. And, and um, we would design to uh, need targets um, that, that New York community wishes us to meet. Such as, uh, a couple examples are, um, you know, net zero energy, so. Uh, we, we could create a building and design a building that, um, uh. Is um, energy surplus and for the most part, that's then using, um. Uh, photovoltaic panels or solid panels or geothermal or so on. Uh, but that's quite achievable and, you know, another approach is uh, natural carbon, and so. Um, you know, we can do that through thorough selection of materials and so on, often, um, wood create, wood is a. Um, good use of that and taking gas uh, out of the, out of the, um. Own of the sort of scope of the project and powering it strictly through electricity, uh, in terms of materials, um, as I mentioned, we, we. Preference worked with wood, uh, mass timber and otherwise, um, so we can always, uh. Use materials that are uh, manufactured close, um, uh, have the least, um. Uh, you know, negative impact, have more recycled content, um, and we, we can work that. Into our specifications from everything from, um, you know, infill indoors to. Uh, metal materials, uh, including any stud workers on, so there, there's, there's, and gypsum wool board as well. So there's lots of ways to green your project, um, energy uh, is one and, and um. Maybe staying away from, um, from gas is another. We would, uh, we would take direction from the team.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Bray.
I had a question about the RISIC um, engineering report, and I, I think I'm reading it properly to say that there. So they looked at this in twenty twenty-two, but when I look at the drawings that were made by the um, consultant J D A. Architecture, um, it looks like they were talking about, um. Option six. And that caught my eye because, um, this option looks like it was the same footprint. But the way it's described in just, um, RISIC engineering, um, was the idea that. You knock down the administration building, you put the apparatus bay up. Meantime, the apparatus, the current apparatus bay is functioning, then once the, once the new apparatus bay is completed. Then, um, then the. Existing apparatus bay becomes uh, the admin building. And that's what I see as option six, so I'm interested in, in learning more about that option. Um, and I don't know tonight, but the point being, that looks quite attractive in terms of continual use of the apparatus bay. And keeping it on the same site and reusing the, the building, one of the problems with the option, the preferred option, so-called. Is that it, um, leaves us with two buildings that we probably don't need and maintaining and keeping them going and. Tearing them down is sort of an anti-climat, anti-climate thing if we don't do something else, so that one is, I find quite interesting and appealing.
Yeah, Ed, could you speak to option six?
Certainly, and yeah, we, we, sorry, actually, yeah, there was a lot of interest in, and, um. You know, our approach really was to explore as far as we could, um, the reuse of the existing apparatus bay because. We understood that it was relatively new and, um, had some potential. Uh, so we looked at options such as, as this, um, clearly you can see by the scale of the new apparatus bay, if you're looking at option six. Um, it's, it's approximately twice the size of the existing apparatus bay, so, um. Clearly, the existing, um, there was an opportunity not to be used as an apparatus, but as a, as a, um. Altered version, so, uh, we would expect that there would be, um, as outlined in the structural analysis and assessments. Um, a, a significant work done to the apparatus bay. To convert it to, uh, any reuse, uh, whether it's apparatus or administrative or operational sort of. Uh, program spaces, um, we did feel there was some opportunity to use it, but it would. Uh, of course, as I seem to be stating, require a, a significant amount of work, including. Uh, you know, removing the roof, making it taller, um, the foundation work, um, all sorts of things. Um, this might be one of the ones where there's an opportunity to work the new build into supporting the existing somewhat, I'm obviously not a structural engineer, so. Um, some of my comments, um, you know, the structural engineer may roll his eyes. But we wanted to explore all options and not just, uh, current plans dismiss the. Uh, apparatus bay as unusable, so if there was a, um, situation where the A L R land was not. Uh, available, um, this could be an, an option that would be, um, worthy of some consideration.
Thank you, and I think it's worthy to, to note that in the skyline, uh, report in the summary. Um, talking about reusing the fire or the bay area and, and, um. Modifying it to code to be used as a bay area, it, it does state that. Um, the cost of the upgrades is anticipated to be significant. And could very well approach the cost of a new replacement building serving the same purpose. Um, do you agree with that? Is that a fair question? Do you agree with that statement? That seems, um, like a logical.
If you, you're asking me from the analysis and from the structural engineers. Analysis, I'd say yes, absolutely, uh, I, I just feel there's some, uh, some obvious upgrades that have been outlined. And then there's a whole series of unknowns, and, um, that's also been identified, so. Um, I wouldn't feel, uh, comfortable to say it would be less expensive than a brand-new, uh, even though it may be, but, um.
Okay.
Uh, you know, it's just.
And so options, option six was designed if we were to use the existing apparatus bay as an apparatus bay with new additions.
Yes, so op- option six, to repurpose the existing apparatus bay into different programmed use.
Okay.
Not apparatus bay, so I don't know if you have it on the screen somewhere, but you can see the, the apparatus bay to the left. And, um, the yellow represents, um, sort of administrative quarters.
Okay.
It would have to be housed with functions that are not critical post-disaster.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Steve.
So, so just to speak to that, as, as the steering committee, we initially started with our geotechnical survey, just to find out. If, if this site is even appropriate, skyline also needed that information in order to complete their analysis, so. Depending on the soil types, if they're softer, then your, your seismic hazard goes up quite substantially, soft soils are really bad for structures. So before we started engaging them, we wanted to know where we sat, but ground-wise, and that's why you'll see. The report was April nineteen, twenty twenty-two, and skyline says May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. This RISIC direction just came from that kind of initial direction that the steering committee was sort of understood might.
Okay, Counselor Donaldson.
Yeah, um, I hadn't really looked at that one in particular, I did look at a couple others that, um, were also attractive on the same site, because I had. Um, been following those earlier reports, uh, as a citizen and was very respectful for the amount that kind of worked and forethought. Um, the one question I do have, i- if it is to remain on the same site or not. Um, it seems that with the drawings that I've seen, the concept drawings, that part of the building is two-story and part of it is not. Is there a reason why we wouldn't have the whole building's two stories? And I imagine it would be more environmental, easier to heat.
Steve, do you want to take that?
Sure, just, just from a structural perspective, the, the office admin area is, is smaller span, so it's easier to support. Two stories in a, in an economical way, once you get into the apparatus bay with longer spans. You, you can have an additional story above, but you need quite a bit of space for your apparatus, the minimum amount of columns or posts. So, we, in doing that, although it's, although the one side is two stories, the other side is a taller. Where more similar to a warehouse for holding the apparatus with large, large open spaces.
Right.
Space above that. It, while feasible, is, is substantially more loading than, than just no loading.
And the reason I ask that is, nine-nine would just build one, and that's exactly what they did, and so they have. Classroom storms, whatever upstairs, um, I think couching is done similarly, it's, it's much bigger. Building, but it's all two-story as well, so, so there are examples out there, just wondering. You know, is that something that we can consider and use that space, sorry, I understand what you're saying.
It, it really comes down to if, if you can't go out, then, then you would go up, and, and it's that cost benefit and losses between that as they develop the design.
I think a good example of that is the new fire hall in Victoria, um, on Pandora, so they, they, it's a new fire hall and then. Above, they have six floors of housing, um, so they, they didn't have the option of, of moving out horizontally, so. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a more environmental sound footprint, say.
Okay, anybody else have any questions about the engineering or comments? Go ahead.
Uh, just a quick question, uh, just further to, uh, Counselor Donaldson's question. So I, I understand we have a lot of space here in the chosen, we've got acreages here, we've got a large, uh, building lot next door. So I'm not sure whether you're familiar with the Couch Bay Fire Department, but they have built apparatus bases and then their offices above. And maybe I missed what Steve said here, but from an economical point of view, is it better to have just single-story buildings, apparatus? Administration side by each rather than stacking?
Uh, I think what we found is, um, it's most economical to not build over the. Apparatus bay where possible, um, as a, your, um. Structural engineer has mentioned, um, large spans within the apparatus bay, um, would contribute to sizable. Structure required to support any stores, any stories on top. Um, you know, we, we have done that as well in, in, um, sites that are, um, relatively small. Where the option was like some of the examples mentioned was only to build up, but, um, what we really found is. Uh, for, um, access into the apparatus bay and, um, fastest movement for the. Uh, firefighting staff, it's, uh, easier to go adjacent and into the apparatus bay than, um, through stairs and down. Um, well, you know, all these configurations work, but I, I think, um, it would. My, our approach if we were to consider going above would to, um, have some preliminary costing done. Um, as a, as a, maybe a class D or an initial costing to compare it to another configuration, so. Maybe you have two options costed, one that was sort of apparatus base with admin quarters to decide. And then apparatus bay with some space built over, so we could really compare.
So, uh, your colleague that came out last Monday and gave a presentation to the citizens and council. Um, I believe the question was asked, and certainly my position on the committee is to be mindful of expenditures and taxation. Um, and I, and maybe just for the folks that are here that went at the meeting last week. Uh, projected cost per square foot, um, certainly my old employer, uh, they're building a training center and fire hall. And their initial costs two years ago, uh, were twenty-six million and they're at forty-four now and they're not done. Uh, so I think from a citizen and a member of this committee, I think it's important that. We have a clear understanding of what this is going to cost, I know a lot of folks, like, there's no end to what we're going to do to protect our folks, but at the end of the day. I think we have to be realistic on, because we have other business that this municipality has to do. Uh, roads, R C M P, those sort of things, and certainly the fire department, in my opinion, is a high priority, uh, but what is your sense? You know, at looking at this building and, and those costs, does it cover sewage systems and parking lots? And that sort of thing that are going to be required for a new site and a new building?
So, um. See, uh, number one, that, that was me last week or on Monday, um. I gave a presentation, the, um, in terms of costs. Uh, part of the feasibility study is we have to coordinate a class D with a cost consultant for, uh, an option. Uh, as part of our, um, report, so that is something that's coming, so, uh, we would have a, um, a professional. Um, uh, cost estimator, um, put a budget together for. Uh, one of our options, whichever one we're directed to, um, to have them cost out. So at the end of this process, there will be a, uh, cost, a detailed costing. Uh, analysis of whatever option we decide that, uh, can be taken away and digested.
Uh, just continuing, Ed, uh, how about cost overruns in general, I know I mentioned about, uh, Sanits going over on their estimate, um. Being a small municipality, we only have so many people paying into the coffers, so. Is there usually a percentage that it's given to, to cost overruns, just, you know, ten percent, five percent, or whatever the case.
Well, well, at the initial, so, you know, typically we see cost estimates, um, in the. You know, they label them as A, B, C, and D, and D is something that we would be able to do on of a very, uh, preliminary. Preliminary concept such as, you know, we've provided, um. It built into that, um, because there's a significant amount of unknowns at the earliest stages, uh, there are. Uh, there are contingencies, and their contingencies um, are fairly high. And so um, as the detailed design um, progresses, and you get to a point where you could do a higher level of costing. Um, you reduce the contingency generally, because there's more questions answered about assemblies and, and construction and so on. Um, so what we found is as we go through the processes. Uh, if we find in terms of um, you know, if we were, let's say, hired to do working drawings or construction documentation for. For one, one of the options, um, we would have it costed a couple times through that process. And what we find is if um, we are uh, trending in the direction of over, we would figure a way to. Uh, cut back, whether that's through uh, materials or scope or what have you. Um, so that's one way of, of maintaining and keeping our eye on the costs. Uh, the, the other way is if we're going to, in the end, if you're going to, you have a competitive bidding process, like a dip sum. Ensure there's um, a vetted um, um, competition, so you're getting enough um. Uh, interested parties that are giving you a proper bid, and then it's critical that the consultant team produce a. Um, a thorough set of drawings um, covering as, as um. A, you know, a very well detailed uh, package, and then on top of that, there's, there's always um. Uh, there should be a contingency as part of the, the budget, so if it came in, and I'm just gonna say. For being a nice number, ten million dollars, um, you know, you should probably carry contingency in five to ten percent. Um, just in your back pocket, because there's often a lot of unknowns. Um, you know, if everyone who's built the building uh, understands, there's always surprises.
And, and just finally, sorry, um, so uh, there is a timeline that uh, the district's looking at for funding from the province. And it's a substantial sum, if you've probably heard, in the neighborhood of around seven million dollars. Um, so if we needed some costing, what would the timeline be if we pulled the trigger tomorrow? On getting those, that information, so that if we did apply for these grants that, you know. Would we be in time for September the fifteenth when the cutoff is, or is that uh, ambitious?
No, I, I think that's uh, totally reasonable, and uh, we've been asked that question already, um, we've worked with um, a. A few different um, professional um, cost estimators, and they are quantity surveyors, and they have. Uh, always been in the range of um, uh, class D level estimate of um, approaching three weeks. So, um, we would need uh, a bit of time, a week or two, to put together the information. In addition to these um, schematic diagrams. Um, for them, because they want to have an idea about uh, wall assemblies and general construction. And then they would take that away and spend, I would say, three weeks, so. We're looking at a month and a week or so to have that costing completed.
Yeah.
So, well, well within the timeframe.
That, that, that is correct, uh, Brent. With the grant, uh, we need a completed on, online application form. The attached feasibility study and or design report, a detailed cost estimate template. Uh, a map or drawings, project budget, uh, current council or board resolution indicating support for the proposal. Proposed activities and a willingness to provide overall grant management and own uh, forced labor. And or equipment requests, so those are requirements of the grant for the grant for uh, September twelfth. Councilor Gray.
Just want to confirm, uh, the um, class D price that we get is plus or minus fifty percent. So in your example, if it was ten million, it would be somewhere between five and fifteen million in the end, or that's what the estimate's giving us?
Um, is uh, I, I didn't realize fifty percent sounds, sounds extreme, but um. I, that could be.
Thank you. The other thing that I'm curious about in your experience, I, you know, we had a. Question proposed at the very beginning that council looked at, and you were the successful um, contractor. And I, I was under the perhaps misapprehension that there would be costs associated with various options, so we might choose between them. Um, thinking if you're gonna sell me, you had two cars for sale, I'd need to know the price to say, well, that's my preferred option. And I realize here you've gotten to it through a different method, but I would be uh, much appreciative to see the cost. Estimate of some type between some of these options that have been presented.
Yeah, I, I think maybe that's fair to have a couple priced, but I don't think we would have them all priced. Um, what our experiences at this, at this level, we're building um, um. You know, if we're repurposing the apparatus bay and building, the, the rest is one thing, if we're building a one or two-story. Um, you know, at the, at the um. Class D level, um, there's, there's gonna be some, um. There's gonna be some commentary within the quantity surveyor's report, um, but it's, I don't feel it's gonna be significant. And so I think if we're um, costing on um, any of these options, they're probably within, you know, five percent of each other. In terms of um, you know, overall, so. Uh, I think if we were to do um, you know, a couple options. Uh, you would, you would find there's not a, in terms of budgeting, there's not a significant difference.
And that was, I think, what um, the skyline said about. Or perhaps yourself about re- renovating the existing apparatus bay, it might cost the same as a new building.
And I, I frankly, I, I think um, when they come to um, a renovation, they will um, err on the side of. Um, being conservative, and um, I, you know, the more I think about it here, is the um. The cost it will put down, because there's a lot of uncertainty around uh, the existing apparatus bay would be, would be even higher.
Thank you. I'm not just thinking about myself, I suppose, but I imagine this whole question would go to a referendum. You know, probably not the people on the table making the decision, but at some point, the um, public will, will be wanting to know things like. Costs of different options.
Go ahead, Bruce.
So with regard to the grant, um, if it, we, we got it uh, successfully. How long would it remain in force? Are, are available to us, and second thing would be, um, and, and the reason I'm asking that is because. How long will it take to get a variance uh, on the ALR land? Uh, if that was the option that council chose, would the grant still be available in whatever period of time? Stephanie's nodding her head.
Yeah, I'll see, I'll pay it.
Yeah, thanks for the chair, the grant, um, decision process would take um. Six months to a year, and then typically two-year window for expenditure, plus another year extension possibly, so. There would be time. ALR, um, someone spoke more eloquently than I on ALR tonight, but. Um, I have a little bit of the ALR information, that's in the agenda.
Yeah, we'll speak to that later on. No, that's fine. Yeah, good question. Yeah, good question. Go ahead, uh, Councilor Shukin.
Thanks, Mary Little. Just as we're on the topic of the grant, um, seven million has been thrown out a number of times.
Up to?
Up to seven million, okay. That was my question, I, I wasn't expecting would be. Seven million, I, I looked at some of the past grant applications, and they're all over the place, big and small and all that, so, yeah, just, okay.
Okay, and, and uh, just for everybody's information, at our Monday night meeting, uh, our CFO, Jeffrey Creek, has prepared. Uh, 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 financial analysis of what we have available, um, and so he will, um. He'll bring that to the Monday meeting. Okay, any other questions? Uh, Councilor Shukin and then Councilor Gray.
Mary Little, I, I have some questions generally, which I was hoping to get. Uh, from Mr. Hornick and actually Chief Dunlop as well, and Mr. Payet, of course. Um, but I, they, they are pretty general, I, I'm just kind of wondering where.
That's fine, go ahead.
Okay.
That's what this meeting is for, go ahead.
Yeah, and um, yeah, and the time maybe is right, actually. So. M- Mr. Hornick, thank you for your report, and, and it was interesting to see the, the four issues you want us to address. And I, it sounds like we're gonna try and make some effort to address them on Monday. If you got clarity.
Could I ask everybody, including the podium, to turn off your mics when you're not speaking? That's great. Yeah, turn them off, okay.
I, I think um, that would basically conclude the feasibility study at that point, we would, we would have. Well, maybe not quite, there would still be the few other answers in the RFP, but. Um, that would get us to, to the finish line on this stage of it, which is very conceptual. Um, beyond that, would have to go to, there'd be getting into construction drawings and stuff like that.
Just let's pause for a moment, my microphone's working. Is your, is yours?
Check.
There you go.
We're just gonna take a five-minute break. Does your microphone work, Brent? Everybody's microphone works?
Test, test, yeah, okay.
Uh, we're, we're just gonna continue with a four-minute break, we'll be, we'll resume in four minutes. Okay, thank you uh, for that brief. We're just gonna continue the June fifth, twenty twenty-five uh, special committee meeting of the whole. Uh, we, we took a minor break, um, and do we have any more questions? Regarding the um, engineering. Um and do we have any more questions regarding the um engineering? Or the skyline reports or for the architects, Councilor Shukin?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Little, I'm just wanted to rephrase my question, I guess. So um to Mr. Hornick, we make decisions on Monday and get the green light to go one direction or another. And I guess my question to you is, where are we at in the process at that point? Sorry, and you, you started to answer and then got kind of cut off, but.
Yeah, and I think where we're at with that is to get the answers, the the two major answers, which is, which site do we build on and which option are we choosing? And whether or not we go to the uh in that ALC application, which is, I think no matter what option we do, I think we need the LSC application for temporary facilities and whatnot. But that would allow us to proceed and continue with the feasibility study and I think be fairly close to completing feasibility study portion of the project.
Okay.
Um there may be some other stuff that we wanna look at, uh there was talk housing components and so on within the RFP. And I I don't think we're just quite at that stage yet. Um so that would most likely happen sort of secondary to this, but I think the urgency would be to get the study completed to a state where we can apply for the applicants for the the grants.
Great, great. Great, thank you.
Counselor Gray.
Yeah, well, I was gonna ask something different, but through the chair, Mr. Hornick, the housing component, we heard from the architect that that would be very expensive and sounded like prohibitive. Are you thinking there's some uh light still there?
Uh I, I think that it was part of the uh RFP. And and it doesn't necessarily have to, we don't necessarily have to go down that path, but I think it was something that we were still looking at doing. As as a committee, I think that was part of our thoughts back when.
Thank you.
Just to note that the, the whole idea of including housing uh was a significant financial gain for the district. That that there were, there were many grants available for that uh type of of uh facility that would include housing. That's that was particularly why we were interested in that.
Yes, I recall, I guess what I'm thinking now is we, so just to be clear, I had a peek at the agenda for money and the public should know. There are two um um motions coming to the table. One is to um for the council, recommend that the council direct the C A O to move the um entire uh four, five, five oh Happy Valley Road out of the A L R. And the second um motion I saw on the agenda package was uh per uh proving the um, what's called here the preferred option. So I, how would we prove the preferred option if there's housing involved? When would the house, when would you get the price of the housing and figure that out?
I thi- I think the housing component, if it was to move forward, would be secondarily, secondary to the building. I don't think you would want to, if you attach housing onto the building, I believe it would have to meet posted on disaster standards as well. Is that right, Steve?
Correct.
So where would the housing sit on the preferred option? Uh which page is that on?
Uh that isn't in the design. That isn't in the design, that hasn't been considered. And as uh as the chair of the feasibility study just mentioned, that would be secondary.
Yes, I'm just asking where on the footprint, the new footprint, would it sit in the parking lot or?
They haven't, we haven't looked at that, the, the architect has.
So we would approve this option and then where would the housing go is the question I'm asking.
Uh Steve, go ahead.
Sure, so a- as a steering committee, we were trying to provide all options for, for funding for the project. And one of those included C A, C M H C funding, which depending on what type and what level of housing can fund some or all of your, of your the overall project, it does need to be attached and it does need to be host disaster, sorry. So at, at some time ago, direction was to not proceed much further forward with, with the exploration of the, the housing component, although it was included in the RFP. And at that point, we just continued forward with just the straight fire hall designed to keep things streamlined, to not get bogged down with a, with a housing component that was undefined and, and didn't really have a scope attached to it. So in order to just move forward with J D A and feasibility study, we, we just pulled back on the housing part, left that alone and continued forward.
Understood, I perhaps maybe this goes back to the question, I was surprised to see this on the agenda on Monday, of course. Um I don't know if the recommendation comes from the committee or from the subcommittee, um but it's, it's on the agenda. And I don't understand how we choose between options if we don't have a full picture of what's going on and the costs associated with it. It sounds like at least a couple of options. And I would like to see us actually hearing this new news or the news that housing may be back on the agenda. Um how that fits with the grant, how we, you know, roll that into the grant that people want to apply for by September. Moreover, it seems to me that once we start having layers of development here, we should do what's called the discounted cash flow analysis of the options, including the housing, before we make a decision. I think other, to do otherwise might be irresponsible.
One of the problems that we might be running up against is those grants were available two years ago. There has been amazing uptake in uh B C build grants and uh they're already overma- over um subscribed. Um so there's gonna be a slowdown in, in, or there is a s- a stop of the, those B C building grants. Um I'm doubtful whether the uh C M H C grants would be still available. Um but we would have to check that, that we'd need to reassess that. But um um we can discuss that if that is a route that council decides to go to.
Thank you, Mayor Little, from my own perspective and just reading the material, understanding where, where the processes come to date. Um how complicated it is to even get us here. My sense is that housing is no longer a consideration for this. My, my sense is also that we had best get ourselves ready to apply for that grant. We don't want to be, you know, driven to an outcome simply because a grant exists. However, as I understand it, this one may be so substantive and material to the future of this project that we really need to take advantage of, of what's before us. And, and with that, I just do not see housing being a part of this project any further. And I, I think we should all be fine with that. The one thing it will also suggest is, you know, we do have to keep options open. If we apply for the grant and we finally get, great, if we get seven million, we may get two or three million or something like that. And then we have to reassess. So it's um, yeah, it's, I, I think we, we need to move, but still understand that we are in a process of understanding what we're gonna build, so, thank you.
So if we were uh to be granted two or three million, there is this thing called borrowing. We all have mortgages, well, many of us have mortgages, it's, it is a very common thing, and it's very common in municipalities. Many municipalities would love to have no debt, we have no debt. Um the interest rates are low, I think it's like two point seven, we could get better on with that, with the mu- municipal financing, the M F A. Um so let's discuss that um at a, a later date in terms of, of um of what we have available and what we would need um for potentially the new fire hall. And as I say, the fire, or the uh CFO is bringing back a report on Monday night on, on what we have in hand. Counselor Gray.
Thanks for that, I think the, the, as um one of the committee mentioned early on in the meeting, there's one thing about what we would like to have, and the other is what we're able to afford. And so for me, um getting a few options that we can present to the public, uh as I say, a dis- uh discounted cash flow analysis to look at the, show us the difference in today's dollars. People often say it'll be more expensive in the future, not necessarily so, do the analysis and, and find out. Um and then also if you're phasing a project, which um at least the, one of the options I was interested in, it looks like a kind of a phasing uh process that may work well for us. The other, the question I wanted to ask now though was about um the public involvement. So we have one letter here um from uh Frank Mitchell, you know, talking about, you've gotta get the public input going. We had um a commitment made the other night when we met, uh Mayor Little of yourself, about the public involvement, lots of opportunity. We seem to be doing this like last week, this week, and on Monday, it's like, wait a minute, where's the public opportunity? People spoke tonight, I understand that. But we also, I recall hearing from the C E O when we let the RFP, that the um actual feasibility study included a public um participation at the beginning or the middle of the, of the feasibility study, I wonder where that's all at in terms of um getting people involved and being aware of what we're doing.
Uh well, as I stated at the very beginning of the meeting, all of the feasibility, of all of the fire hall steering committee meetings were open to the public. We've had two council members at that public, we've had um staff at that, that meeting. Um these meetings are open to the public, people were most welcome to uh speak at the microphone. We've had many letters here uh from uh constituents um as well as Pearson College and Beecher Bay. Um and the majority of these are in favor of moving forward with rebuilding the fire hall and taking advantage of the, of the grant opportunities. Um so where we are is we'll continue with, with having meetings and public engagement. Um we haven't decided as a council what, what kind of a, a, a formal uh open house or, or formal pugmic engagement uh besides the council meetings we've had. Counselor.
I just, I just finished to say, I guess partly for me, the, my understanding is that there was a um certainly public meetings with people could be involved. But I read the note at the beginning and it looks like much of the work was done through a subcommittee where the public wouldn't have had the opportunity to learn what's going on. Um so I don't think it's been, and there haven't been that many meetings of the steering committee itself. So I, I, I think we should be careful how we describe it and I'm just saying that I think this is, well, for forty years, Michoson has been without debt. And the idea that we would sort of move along here and, and move into a position where we might put the district into debt uh does require careful consideration. And I think the public voice is important with our specific opportunities other than just that we have meetings and people can attend.
Counselor Shukin.
S- so to uh Counselor Gray's point, there, I think there are plenty of opportunities left for public engagement. Because all we've, if we decide to move on this, all we've done essentially is select an option likely we're going to pursue or bring to a grant process. We haven't decided to build it, we, we still have to wait for the outcome of the grant process and see where we get. So we've selected an option to begin to focus in on that. So again, there's a lot of room between the, you know, the options being presented here and to a decision to build. So and there is time for public engagement there, so.
Yeah, thank you, I was reminded by staff today that in small communities, you have committees that actually take, take the place of, of what staff would do. And when staff are making those decisions, it's not done in the public. Um and so I guess if we're going to criticize, if you're going to criticize the steering committee for having a subcommittee uh to go through some of the nitty-gritty, it would be the same as, as um um asking for complete transparency of, of what this staff is doing on a day-to-day basis on different projects. Counselor Epp, then Counselor Gray.
I just wanted to say that the subcommittee uh reported at the steering committee meetings.
Thank you. Counselor uh, or sorry, uh Brent and then.
Sorry, I think you put me second on the list there.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, my point was just to clarify, when you had laid out all of the participation that was possible, mu- much of it wasn't, I was not criticizing the steering committee, I think, I'm impressed by what they've done and I appreciate the work.
Uh just a point of clarification on the new layout site options. Uh the overall uh steering committee uh was not involved with any of the decision-making on these drawings before you, we weren't consulted. Um we received these later in a package from the district.
Okay. Okay, um any other questions about uh this, the, e- either the architects or before we move on to the A L R component? About the building site, about um the benefits of building on a, the adjacent site? Yeah, go ahead.
I just have to respond um to, to that comment. The, these documents, as a steering committee, we voted that they would be produced. And then, then they came forward. So that was a, a motion that was put forward that we would engage these consultants and that's where the information came from.
Uh not to get in an argument, but on our last steering committee meeting minutes or the agenda, the documents were presented, but they were unreadable, so there was no discussion on the new options and site. And you, you weren't there, unfortunately, and as well as Mr. Carling and uh Mr. Seer.
Thank you. Okay, so uh, uh any other comments for the items that we've already discussed? If not, let's move along to item number four point one point four, which is the planner's uh memorandum, A L R application options when planning for future of municipal buildings within the agricultural land reserve four four five zero Happy Valley Road. And I'll ask the C A O to walk us through this, thank you.
Okay, thank you through the chair. Um I can go through this a little quicker, maybe people are getting tired. I think the committee had a chance to read the report, so I will summarize it, but I just wanted to preface it with a few comments. The A L R um is the reserve and the L R is the catalog of property that makes up the reserve in B C and the A L C is the commission. Um the commission chair is Jennifer Dyson and she's um hails out of the Alberni Valley. She chairs the commission, there's nineteen commissioners, commission members appointed from six admin- administrative regions of the province who are collectively the board of directors. And the chair of the commission is appointed by order of council, of cabinet, and all other members of the commission are appointed by ministerial order. Other salient points are that the commission on average adjudicate more than four hundred applications each year. The chair of the commission has au- authority to establish panels of two or more members, which she has done, and she has directed six decision-making panels, one for each of the six administrative regions of the province. The commission deliberates on the applications, the staff of the commission carry out uh um regulatory and, and processes. Um and the chair of the commission directs um the flow of information on the adjudication and the workload of the commission. So, all that being said, um my understanding from our, our history of applications are that we receive uh responses um around three months period. Um but we have never done an exclusion, so I would anticipate that to be a longer process, um probably up to six months. We of course have the opportunity as staff to um contact the A L C commission staff and um, you know, move forward as quickly as we can on applications. We've already contacted uh my, myself, the planner, the A L C of staff, they're, they're aware um of the dialogue and so we've already uh basically initiated a process. But we would have to do it a formal application process, so I'll just go through the report quickly, everybody. Uh so the formal application process would be submitted by our planner, um it would be a resolution of council. The uh, we would apply either for non-farm use or we would apply for an exclusion to remove uh four four five zero Happy Valley Road. Traditionally, we've uh gone with the non-farm use for for decades. And that's been successful. The A L C considers several interrelated factors, you review the variables that it considers relevant to the application and weighs the likelihood and likely impact of the proposal against a long term goal of preserving agricultural land. So those are basically our two options. Four four five zero Happy Valley Road is not in the village center development permitted area. And breakdown of the exclusionary exclusion application, there's two questions, two fairly important questions to talk about, I think tonight would be in your package would be would an application to remove only a portion to provide, would it provide for more efficiency of use of land or would it be more complicated use of land? And would an application to remove only a portion allow for the preservation of agriculture land on the remaining lands? Meaning if we took a little portion of four or five and put a building on it and didn't take the rest of the out of the L R land, would it be used for agriculture? That's something to discuss. Have a comment on that.
Okay, thank you. So each option, either applying for a non-farm use or for exclusion to remove four four five zero Happy Valley Road or or part thereof would require a for formal application. Yeah, okay, okay, good. Does anybody have any questions regarding the A L C or the A L R land adjacent to the fire hall? Go ahead, Brent.
Uh, certainly as a farmer, uh, I know there was a speaker earlier that said this land wouldn't be conducive to agriculture. I understand the the convenience of building something next door here. But certainly I wouldn't be in favor of having all the municipal lands removed from the A L C. It may seem like we're not doing anything in the way of agriculture now, but a hundred years from now you can put greenhouses and you can run sheep and we don't know what the global economy or food production will be. So certainly I'm in favor of just annexing or removing the area that the possible new fire station could be built.
Anybody else have any comments? Counselor Shukin.
So the questions I would have, and maybe we can't answer them today, maybe we can though, is if we move to the non-farm use, do we, I think we would define uh like a space, like we have, I don't know whether it's surveyed. And um, and and I'm I'm sure we would use part of that as a lay down area as well. So, so, yeah, so I guess is is it um a case of surveying a portion of land and then you apply for that? Or some other, you know, way of defining the property, so.
So what would the the C E O, what would be the process? Would it just be from the the existing maps that would be included in the application? And um a drawing over that map or an overlay saying this is what we'd like to, we would like to have annexed out of the A L R for the um the non-farm use?
I don't, I don't know a hundred percent know um myself, but we, I mean, this current building is non-farm use. So this building is parceled out of the A L R for non-farm use, the rest of this land is A L R. So when this building was done, it was parceled out somehow in in a drawing or in a um legal document or whatnot. So that's how it's done.
I think the community houses the same situation and that's very recent, I think in the last twenty-ish years. So it'd be the same sort of application, might be, you know, able to find that information.
Counselor, Counselor Donaldson.
Yeah, where we're sitting tonight was the original house of the property, which is now down, it's the E O C, it's a pan about. The Michoson Community Association, the house was another house where we see the Pioneer Museum, that was a barn. So it was originally a farm site, which is probably why it's A L R as well. Second to that, uh, the earlier comment about land not being useful for farming, I would strongly disagree. As the mayor and I, at the beginning of our term, took a tour of Sandown Raceway, which is now a regenerative agricultural site. And they're doing amazing things of bringing the soil back, a lot of work, I know, but this, this is very good soil here. Yes, it gets compact a little bit for market days, maybe fair once a year, that sort of thing. So it's easily remediated, it easily could be farmed and it is not contaminated. And certainly the um school site is not contaminated, hasn't hasn't had chemicals on it in probably ten years. So there's a lot of misinformation out there, but the these are still good pieces of land that could be used in the future, we don't know. So we just have to decide what it is that our community needs for this um structure. Yeah, and there's a lot more information that I think we're gonna see in the next few weeks or next month or so.
Counselor.
Well, considering that we do have the property across the road at the school, uh which is uh in the A L R and we don't have any particular plans for that besides the community garden, which is a good use of it. But at any rate, I believe that this section should be taken out of the A L R just because it is our municipal grounds and we have several municipal buildings on it already. And uh, and it's just to do anything on it the way it is, it's extremely complicated. We got, I know the cricket club went through that, just trying to do that little piece of of improvement on the cricket pitch. And it was just to go through all, jump through all the hoops just to get something small like that done. And I, I can't see that this area on this side will ever be used for any kind of a farming as long as it remains a municipal area where the this building is and the others. And so I think that that going for the exclusion would be the best option.
Now, the certainly operationally, it would be uh much easier to build on the land next to uh the fire hall. Other municipalities have to either buy land or expropriate land or build up. We're in a very, very fortunate uh situation where we have this land um available. I'm wondering if there's somebody at the table or perhaps the fire chief can talk about that operational piece. Counselor Shukin.
Yeah, sorry, Mayor, we're we're closing in on ten, which, do we need a motion to continue?
Yeah, if I can get a motion to continue past ten, moved by Counselor Shukin, second by Counselor Donaldson, all in favor, post carried.
How much past ten?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, so, so in terms of operationally, um what would that look like? I'm not a firefighter, um if somebody could give me some help out here. D C Henny, thank you.
Yeah, so when we talk about operationally, um there's a lot of benefits to building on a new site and maintaining our service that we're providing to the community right now. I've been through a department that has gone through this exact problem. We did have to relocate, uh we relocated to a small barn and it was a large challenge for us to achieve equal service that we're giving. So the one thing that we have to consider as well is we're not gonna do this or we want to move a temporary structure that was talked about earlier. That our temporary hall is gonna move over there and we are going to continue operating out of our hall. We have to also consider we're gonna be doing ground preps, we're gonna be putting in power grids, there's gonna be a fort to spend just before we can even put ten structures in place. We can look around, other departments are going through it right now, Squamolt is in temporary tents. They got a bunch of different tents to house each apparatus separately, there's security of apparatus. And issues around where we put our internal gear, where it's washed, uh containment. So as you can see in some of their drawings, there's a lot of buildings and components to add just to have a temporary housing on another site so we can operate still. I don't really see an easy way for us to get around staying or removing ourselves from the current building, tearing it down and trying to operate out of a temporary site. We don't have a lot of options in the community to even rehouse the equipment alone. Something to just consider is each truck is an average weight of forty thousand pounds. So there's gonna be a lot of soil remediation just to make sure that we can hold that equipment. So right away, we're gonna be doing a lot of damage to that soil to continue in the A L C as well, just even putting a temporary there.
Thank you for that. Fire Chief, did you have anything you wanted to add? No? Okay, anybody else at the table? No, okay, so what what questions do we have remain unanswered that we need information to move this forward to the next step? What what is it that you're you're thinking? Questions remaining, this is the time when we have the expertise at the table and I think we still have Ed online. What 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 questions do we have? Counselor Donaldson.
Well, I think.
I'm here.
One of the questions is, um, is there more than one option that we're going to be looking at? And I guess we'll discuss that on Monday night.
On Monday night, yep. We'll, we'll, we'll hopefully be able to come to some conclusion on the option um on Monday.
If we apply for the grant with one option, can we alter that option? Should we get the grant?
C E O Payet.
So I can only go by experience, uh, my most recent grant application was successful for a um sewer treatment plant upgrade for seven million dollars. We received it a year and a half ago, maybe at this point. They're still working through the final design process and regulatory process and project kind of ebbs and flows through that final, final design. And so the um, the grant grant authority understands the engineering processes. So we we're submitting our best um class D and drawings at a certain point for the funding. And we put our very best case forward a- as to what um we think the final result would be for a project. Um but tweaking it um afterwards is, I think, well known. And but relocating and doing a totally different option would be problematic and would probably require I don't know, a review of the grant application, I would think. So I would be cautious on that one.
Okay, Fire Chief.
Thank you, uh, just through experience with the grant for the school, that infrastructure grant, we did some changes to that and we decided to put in the kitchen and the washrooms. And we just applied and just advised them of why and, you know, explained what we were doing and they were fine with that. So they've already allocated the funds to whoever wins that grant. Um, the other thing I'd like to just remind everybody, this is just a feasibility study. We aren't, you know, breaking ground next week or anything, it is just the idea and the general principles of do we want, you know, do we want to take down the apparatus and build new or do we want to take out, you know, move it on the the fresh ground next door, you know? What does that look like, those kinds of decisions, what it actually looks like, ends up looking like? That's, that's a long way out yet. So I guess I just want to make sure that we all remember that this is just a feasibility.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? D C Henny.
Yeah, I just uh want to talk a little bit about, there were some conversations around hall designs, like two story, one story and reasons behind it. When we look around the province itself on the two stories, one stories, that was lent to the size of the property. That was their design, we'll look at Cumberland was uh done in twenty eighteen, I believe. They purchased another piece of land and they put a single story up because they had the space to do it. And Animo was constrained to its city lot, they didn't have choices and they built it behind their hall while maintaining operation in their front hall. Couch and Bay Fire Department, same issue, they were designed based on the size of the property, it's on the angle because that was the piece that they had in the field behind them. They could remain operational. So it's a lot of thought put into whether we stay on the sites or not on the sites or whether we go up or out. It's not like the committee hasn't thought of those things. And when we talked about uh cost overruns and everything, a great example for everybody to look at would be the Salt Spring Fire Department, they're going through their bill right now. They have a fantastic site, they give quarterly updates on where they're at on budget, projections, they're on track for the thirteen million dollars. Couch and Bay, don't quote me on the numbers, I believe came in around fifteen million dollar quote. The chief chopped out a lot of frivolous things and brought it down to a re- more reasonable down around twelve million. And I think they're pretty on track with their budget, so. Some things to look around that other departments have done and other communities have done. And when we look at like Salt Spring, they they went through a lot of different R F Ps, if you look at the history of Salt Spring, trying to achieve theirs is the first one that came forward on feasibility study wasn't the option the community cho- chose. It was denied at the community level because that was what they presented, so they came back with other options, other options, other options. And I think if we go to the community with ten different options or two different options, it's just gonna start confusing the process.
So regarding the Couch and Valley, uh, there it was a two or a three bay that's facing the the main highway and they built on the backside of four bay?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah, okay, and are they going to continue using the two or three bay at that is existing or that's can be repurposed or torn down?
That is being removed, that was in their plans that they were moving that building. The other department that went through a upgrade or if we want to call it seismic was if we look at North Couch and Profton apartment through it. They spent, I think their budget was around four point eight and they were pretty close with it. And all they did was the administration and training side and it turned into a three story, they have a basement and two stories at level and above. Again, property only lent to building in that way. The truck bays weren't that old, but they had, they brought them up to current code as well, so they did exterior work on them and stuff like that to tighten the new building and bring it up to code.
Okay. Counselor Gray.
Thanks for that, Scott, that makes sense. What kind of things, we heard also from um the architect, that mid-project you start cutting things out, um, you know, to bring it under budget. What kind of things get cut out? It seems like it's all needed.
Yeah, so I guess when they, from what I understand with documents in Couch and Bay, when they started doing things was it could be the as simple as the finishes, like polished floors or certain floors, they can reduce those kind of things to reduce that square footage cost. It may not be that they're removing services or they're gonna repurpose rooms, which the subcommittee, we did talk with uh J D A associates there. When we were doing the space program on, well, we need to make these rooms more multipurpose, they need to have dual purposes. So we spent a lot of time going through that space program, reducing space size because it wasn't needed. Or putting rooms that we could do multiple things with. Even when we look at Suk, when they did their hall renovation, uh, they chose a hall renovation on their hall instead of replacing. It came down to the quarters and stuff like that, so they put Murphy beds in their offices for their officers, that's their sleeping quarters. So that was the space that they had to deal with. So those are the kind of things that when I say that they start cutting costs out is looking at efficiencies like that. And I think the subcommittee did a great job at revising that space.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Shukin.
Sorry, I just want to hearken back to um the way um what what Chief Donlop had just said. In terms of where we are, um, there will be an ongoing feasibility assessment, I think D C Henny is essentially saying that too. So I think what essentially we are on the cusp of deciding is that we are going to take steps to address a lingering problem in this community and that is a derelict fire hall. Where we go with that and what we build and how much it's gonna cost is still to be decided. And I think um as a council, we have to keep that in mind and open the door for public input as those opportunities arise. One of the big ones is going to be, again, how much we get for the grant and then what that means in terms of what we can afford. So that's a, that's a door we have to keep open, but keep open once we have knowledge of it, so. Knowledge of, again, of what we get, so.
Counselor Gray.
So I just understand through the, Counselor Shukin, you mean that we start going down the path with this study and then say we get one million dollars from the grant? And what happens? That's pretty, maybe that's a bet, maybe that's a hypothetical you can't answer, but I I didn't mean it in that way, but yeah, how, what are you thinking exactly?
Well, that's pretty simple, we, because we would have to, again, reflect on the cost of the building before us and what. Well, that's pretty simple. We, because we would have to, again, reflect on the cost of the building before us and what that means in terms of financing. So whether that means a loan or whatever. So, um, I don't think, again, we're making again, final notice proceed. That's not what we're doing tonight or next week. Not in September either. So there's a long way to go. And I think Chief Donlop said that, but we're in some ways putting a spike in the ground and saying we're gonna try and uh, deal with this pro- problem that we've got. So.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments at the table? Everybody's getting tired. Yeah, please.
One comment I wanted, uh, one thing I wanted to address on page six, which is the square footage of the building size, uh, is listed at four thousand square feet. And I went back through our ancient archives into a, a, a space study that we did in the very beginning of our uh, committee. And it, it, we came up with around eighty-six, twenty-eight square feet, so somewhere that would have been interior dimensions, I guess. So we're, we're probably closer to nine thousand square feet with the existing building. And, and that's been noted and will be corrected on the reports that come.
Okay, so that's an important point. So we're going from nine thousand to sixty, not four to sixty. Correct, okay.
So we would change that, you know, on two point zero existing building and site description? And then the building si- size says four thousand and it should say?
Eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight.
Thank you.
Ish. Okay, um, staff, have we missed any questions? Any comments? No, this is going to be further discussed at other meetings. Uh, so with that, I wanna thank you for your input. Thank you for your expertise and your patience. And um, I think we did accomplish a lot of things to be, tonight. We, we were able to come together and, and ask some difficult questions and answers were provided. Um, I wanna also thank our, our consultant, Ed. Thank you very much for joining in again. And we look forward to working with you further. Okay.
I do as well. Thank you.
With that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Shukin, second by Counselor Epp, all in favor, opposed carried. Thank you. Good evening.